Okay, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. First order of business, the agenda needs to be amended to add an executive session at the end of the meeting. So at this time I'll entertain a motion regarding amending the agenda. I move to amend the agenda to add the executive session to the end of our regular business meeting.
Sorry.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Now I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I move to approve the agenda.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the mission statements. Trustee Grissom, would you be willing to read the board of trustees' mission statement?
The LJSD Board of Trustees is an elected body of community members committed to serving with honesty and integrity and nurturing a relationship of trust. We hear the voice of our constituents and represent their views of our district. We provide oversight of taxpayer funds through fiscal accountability. We govern through developing, upholding, and advancing policy for the purpose of forging an academic consensus. We create and empower well-rounded citizens while respecting parental authority. We promote individualism, nurture talents, encourage passions, and provide opportunities within the LJSD community.
Thank you. And Dr. Meyer, would you like to read the district mission statement?
Sure. We maximize student learning and ensure that every student is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally, all day, in all environments, from the minute we pick those sweet little cherubs up in the morning on the bus stop, or unless your mom drive walks you to school every day, and till we drop you off at night and your parents get to have you again.
Thank you. Yes, for announcements, I'd just like to remind everyone that these board meetings are our business board meetings. They're held in public, they are not public board meetings. The board is governed by Idaho Code Title 33, Chapter 5. We follow our district policies and IDAPA rules. The time for public input is provided for the public to express themselves to the board. It is not time to engage with the board, nor is it a time for question and answers. The board, in its discretion, may ask clarifying questions to ensure it understands the input provided. However, no discussion or conversations can take place at that time. We do have an employee spotlight. Principal Kathy Thomas of, sorry, Apple Elementary, was nominated and received the Idaho State Distinguished Administrator Jim Award. And just so people have some context, this award is offered by the Idaho Association of Elementary School Principals. And it's put out there to recognize the outstanding leadership and contribution of elementary and middle school principals and related administrators to the profession of elementary/middle school education administration. So it's a very prestigious award. It's the top of the top, the cream of the crop. So congratulations Kathy. And I would like to add that Kathy's nomination came from Tiffany Melton, principal of Twin Lakes Elementary. So her peer, she put in a phenomenal letter that just really highlighted the contributions that Kathy has given to our district, to Tiffany, to other administrators and educators in our district. So very powerful letter and thank you Ms. Melton for the nomination and thank you for your outstanding service to this district. Thank you. Now it's the time for public input. Do we have any input?
No.
Okay. Moving on to report and presentations. First, we have the financial presentation by CFO Wallace. Mr. Wallace.
It might be a little too big, so let me get this big.
I think there's a tab up there. There it is.
Do you want me to do it or do you want to?
I can try. It's a little tiny. All right, members of the board, Chair Thompson, Lieutenant Meyer. So again, just a monthly report. For February, since we're always a month behind, the big news in February is we did get our apportionment report. And because apportionment is based on enrollment this year, as I sort of said before, as opposed to attendance, when we develop budget, we assume attendance was the rule. In the fall, they changed the rule back to enrollment. Our units that we earned, our funding units, were up quite a bit. We build budget on 212 units. So right now, our units are, it won't be final until the end, but it's over 230, which is really good. So when you think about a unit, roughly across the state, the average, we won't know what our final per unit is. It always changes every year depending on the discretionary factor that they give us and also the experience of our staff and where they land in the current ladder. Those sort of drive the total unit funding. But it's around $100,000. So being up 20 units is roughly $2 million. So it's a very significant change. I was just down in Boise at workshops that the state helps put on for finance directors. And you know, many districts, not all, had experienced, you know, increased units because of the enrollment. Some didn't because they're still, you know, hangover from COVID. So when we look at the budget, oh, that's hard to see here. But if you look at year-to-date, on the revenue side, we're at 84.5%. And we received our state payment of, you know, this $5.5 million, which was, that came in February, that state payment. Well, if you look at the previous years, our year-to-date revenue was only 78% the other two years, when compared to budget. The reason we're 6% ahead is that bump in state funding. So if we didn't have that enrollment bump, we'd be closer to probably what we budgeted. Because my number was pretty good as far as the attendance estimate. So that's, from a financial point of view, that's a really good thing for the district. Whether the enrollment funding continues for next year, that's happening in the legislature right now. There's a bill there to continue for at least two more years, but it may not pass. You know, so that's, we're looking at that as the legislature starts winding up the session here.
It passed House, Senate Ed today.
So it did, so it is going through the process.
Yep, so just the full Senate and the governor signs it.
The governor signs it. So that, which would mean, if that does pass, then when I start building budget and estimate the units we're going to earn, I estimate a higher number, obviously because of the enrollment factor as opposed to if it went back to attendance. So we certainly have to wait until, you know, whether it becomes law or not. Because the law of the land right now is, it's a temporary rule by the state board for attendance. So, you know, if no action is taken, it'll go back down to attendance.
Which becomes an if every year anyways.
Well, well, it used to be, well, since COVID, yeah. Attendance was always the rule for forever, since they revised it. So this is a definitely new, but it's good news for the district. You know, our attendance rates as all go with... Anyway, let me finish on here. But anyway, our expenditures are tracking the budget, revenues are up. So, you know, as I stated before, we're, you know, we'll end the year in the black, which is good. And so that will give us, you know, definitely a fund balance where if we want to use some of those dollars for certain things, for one-time expenses, we'll have that capability. This is the new sheet and it is really busy, it's sort of ugly. But, you know, the sheet that we have for budget is sort of ugly too, so at least we're consistent. So all this shows is the general fund and so the numbers here. I did, because the form this uses is doing salaries and benefits, so it's still going by object as opposed by function, which is the first page. But the, you know, it is sort of showing you where we started, our beginning balance for budget, where we actually started when, after our audit, what our actual beginning balance was. And then the monthly activity in those areas. Then all other funds are in the gray. So, you know, that's adding our food service fund, all the federal programs, and all those to combine one. And then it ties out, that's just a combination of the two. So, you know, this is new to the monthly report. If you have questions, we can go over it, or if you want to just meet me at another time, you know, I can certainly go up. But it does, you know, show the activity of the other funds and sort of summarizes it like that state worksheet that we do as part of the budget packet every year. And so I'm available for any questions on that. Again, this is now being just going by function for the two charts we have. You know, we're, you know, on the continuum of the red for the fiscal year. We're tracking fine and, you know, we're getting a little over halfway in the year and so our red lines are sort of moving that way. There's no surprises. And by object, the same way. Again, for the general fund, you know, the salaries and benefits, you know, really drive the budget. And finally, our enrollment, you know, speaking of enrollment, we're, the snapshot time I took it, 4,680, so we've been over 4,700. But, you know, that's held pretty steady, so we're down a little bit from the last time we looked, a month ago. Attendance on that same day that I did this report was at 93.8%. And you can see it depends on some of the schools. You got some real high numbers, 98, 99s at the, at Timberlake. But some other schools, you know, 90, 80, 9, and things like that, which is normal, a little lower than normal. But overall, you know, our attendance rates at 93.8 isn't too bad considering 95% is historical and there's still some of the COVID things. So we're doing better than I think some of our peers as far as the kids continue to be in school. And I think what I have is the same information except for that additional slide, but I'm good for any questions.
I have no questions. No, they're glad to see the extra funding. It sort of alleviates maybe a little anxiety or what have you in regards to the facility levy. Maybe if you want to look at the funding in that way. So that's nice.
Yeah, that was definitely good news on the revenue side.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the safety presentation.
Good evening, members of the board, Vice Chair Thompson, Dr. Meyer. So this is our monthly safety update, pretty short and sweet. Things are going well. One thing though, at our last district-level safety task force meeting that our law enforcement brought up and were very assertive in asking that I make sure that I mention this to the board, is for the first time, we are, our law enforcement officers are starting to see some gang-like behaviors and some gang-like dress. They're not saying we have gang behaviors and gang dress, but just some like hand signals and things we just haven't been seeing before. So our principals and our SROs and armed guards are just kind of stepping up their interactions with kids and working on building those positive relationships. But it's not just in our schools that they're seeing some of these things and they just are attributing it to the large influx of people coming into our communities. So something for us to keep on our radar. We're not having issues in the schools right now, but they just wanted the board to be aware. There's some concern there. We're, we are working on this document. So by the end of this, what is that? By the end of this year, this will be filled out for you. So the tabs at the bottom, one for each school. And we are just kind of wanting to do a little bit of an audit of the safety, hardware, people, what do our programs look like? And so this will be done for you by the end of the year and it will kind of help us determine some priorities that we want to bring forward to the board. So that document is there for you. And then it's really important because we have armed personnel in our schools that we are intentional about ensuring that they're receiving professional development. So when those things come up and we're participating, I will make sure I bring that to your attention. So we do have, Cordeleen School District is offering a National Association of School Resource Officer training that our SROs and armed guards will be participating in. It's free to us and it's being held at NIC. But the three, our three local districts have really strong ties and work closely together. So D and Tech from Cordeleen School District reached out and offered to host that. So they will be attending that. And then our three armed guards in particular, because they're former law enforcement officers, when they're in buildings, they see things in a different way than we do. And so Mike Hogan, who is the armed guard at Apple Elementary, and Kathy's right-hand for a lot of things, everything related to safety, has taken the lead for us and has reached out to our facilities department, our transportation department. And he's our base most recently. He's providing some professional development on just different types of scenarios that could happen in a school and how to respond to those. So most recently, they have all of the base employees up at Apple Elementary and Michael professional development. For them, it was really well-received. And Susie Adams, who is our director, was grateful for the time. So just letting you know that that's ongoing. And that's it for this month. Any questions about school safety? No, I don't have any.
This is the month that we do the annual report for the board on our graduation rate data. The three of the board members did hear this at the state of the community. It was also in the paper if anyone's read it. But I just want to be able to go through so it's in the minutes and then it's in the recording, people see how great we are. Our graduation rate, again, communities to be huge community pride. So we had 346 last year graduates. Our, we are the highest of any comprehensive, with comprehensive schools in the entire state, with any high school over 131 graduates, and we had 346. So that's a huge feat if anyone knows about graduation rate. Our total graduation rate is 93.1. That is down from the year before with 96.7. But with COVID and there was a lot of in-and-out people and it was just a different scenario. You will see that our, we all went down just a little bit in all of our schools, but the entire state went down. Our totals for Timberlake, Lakeland, and Mountain View. Last year, for instance, Mountain Views was 87%. So there was a significant drop just with going with COVID and working with families. There were families that just chose because they all of a sudden had a medical situation or compromised that they pulled their kids out and they maybe were going to take an extra year to graduate, which I think that number will come back up this year. So just to give you a comparison, there is 135 districts. If you count charter districts, a charter school is all by itself because it has its own board. And it's really comparing apples and oranges. It's not even Fuji and Granny Smith. It's not that kind of comparison. Charter schools are completely under a different type of system. So I don't think it's equitable to compare charter schools with regular districts. So the charter schools pulled out. There's seven charter districts that are higher percentage. They range in their cohort of graduates from four students to 45. They, there's seven that are higher than us. Public districts in throughout the, because that's apples to apples. There's 24 districts that are higher percentage. Three of them are larger than 100 students graduating. The rest are between 5 and 82. And you know if you have a smaller school with, the economy's a scale with staff and there, you know, there's a lot of benefits for a smaller school, which we all know, which is why people can, you know, support the levy here for reasonable class sizes in small neighborhood schools. So 24 districts, but there are zero with a graduation rate of above 131 that beat our graduation rate. And again, we had 346. So this is a real testament in this district, and I say it every year and I'm going to say it again, is the reason that our graduation rate is this is because the staff in this district, all of the staff, from the bus drivers to pick them up in the morning, to the office admin, to the green them, the custodians, the teachers, the parapros, everyone's working together. Every single student matters in this district and that's the only way you get a graduation rate like that is if they truly do not let kids fall through the cracks. And so I just want to thank everybody in the district, our entire staff, because this is a testament to everybody really caring about all of our kids. So thank you to all of you in the audience who work in our district. You are very appreciated. Surrounding districts, you can see we beat everybody again. And this is even with going down. So at the state of the community, I showed last year's data to this year's data. But our state total was 80%. Surrounding districts, you can see what they are. And again, Lakeland beat everybody around here, 93.1, but we're the highest of everyone around here. So that's our mission statement, I said earlier, a little bit longer because I have a past student right here that I was talking to our mission. But this, this is really what we do, is every single student matters in this district. And that is just, if people have questions, they can certainly contact me. Once this is done, then it goes on the website, so people may watch it and then have questions. I put my information on there. We've already covered this with the board, so I'm not going through this whole thing. The only thing I want to point out is that Kelsey Badger did another training with the transportation department. And she did a prevention, de-escalation, escalation cycle training. I kind of informed the board a little bit already, but we're keeping an ongoing item here to let you know what we're doing as far as building up their capacity with drivers and everybody in the transportation department, aides, the bus aides, and the drivers on this stuff. So if anybody has any suggestions, we're happy to add additional trainings. This is what the drivers wanted. And then the next step, I updated the board in your update, but we did have the roundtable as we talked about and the board directed me to go do a roundtable with the drivers. So Rebecca and I went over and she took notes while I talked and we gathered a lot of brainstorming information. I did that Thursday, February 24th. And what they'd like to do now is they've kind of found it and synthesized it to some top themes. And they would love to schedule a follow-up with the board, whether just a few drivers come and the director come and present, or whether you have a workshop, or whether you want that via email. They are, just to see them, whether you want us to discuss and give you feasibility on costs. They just want some feedback from the board and how we would like that to look. So that's a follow-up on the transportation department. And then the last thing is, we've had several discussions about the long-range plan. Anybody who's watched prior meetings saw that we had a discussion about plant facility levy. Trustee Grissom even said tonight about the extra money may help with some plant facility levy issues. I just want to again say that we are getting to the point where we definitely want to get this going, a long-range facility planning, whether the board reinstates the past subcommittee and invites people back on again, or whether they open it up completely new. But that we get this going again and start looking at that, start now before we get to the summer so that we have people in place from all the schools and all the areas and get the voice of the community here to get that. And this is a board, in case people don't know, this is a board subcommittee, that they would start the long-range facility planning. So that's that. Any questions?
Moving on to the consent agenda. We have the minutes of the previous meetings, the HR items, and the regular special bills. We'll go through all of them and then we can, um, go through the motions at that time. It's on the hallway to...
I'm trying to find the beginning of that.
It's on the... All right, so does anyone have any questions, comments, or input on the 2-9 executive session meeting minutes? On the 2-9 minutes, that I did have on K.2...
Yes, it's for the regular minutes, I'm sorry.
Yes, the regular school one minutes.
Okay.
On K.2, the note states that this item was addressed in the above action. This is a new business action item. It was regarding appointment assistant district treasurer. Instead of stating this action was addressed in the above action, which it was not, it should state this, no action was taken. Because we didn't take any action on the item. Okay. And then on item K.5, the food service truck. At the very last paragraph, you state Vice Chair Grissom asked about outside catering events that food services has capitalized, has and how that works as far as cost. Mr. Wallace replied, "Food Services," and that was lowercase, "receives the revenues from those outside catering events." I did not have time to go back and listen to the audio. However, what I recall Mr. Wallace stating was that the district receives the funding and then we pay Chartwells for their inwards so that if there were any profits, it would fall back on the district. And the way that's written doesn't imply that. So I'm thinking you need to go back and listen to the audio for clarification on that. And then I think that was it on those two. But that does need to be clarified. And then I was confused if food services, when it was capitalized, isn't the same as food service when it was lowercase and if you're referring to Chartwells? Because I think that's, I'm almost certain that's... Because I think that's, I'm almost certain that's who we're referring to, but it's just not clear. Okay, so if we can get that resolved, that would be great. And then on the two-fifteen board meeting minutes. On E point one, the operational update plan. Your statement is Chair Thompson stated approval was not provided for the operational isolated guidance and changed will to may on page five of the operational plan. I did not make those changes. That was the committee's recommendation. So I don't know if you may want to re-listen to that, but I did not make that change.
Okay.
Okay? And the way it's written states and implies that I did and I did not. It was a recommendation made by the subcommittee. And then on the motion to enter into, or no, on the motion on the appointment of the treasurer on E five, your motion states to reappoint Cindy, have Cindy have me as treasurer for the year with the understanding, "The board will create, update the job description and policy for the next year," made by Vice Chair Grissom. That was not the motion she made and there was an amendment to the motion, so I need you to go back and listen to that. I believe it's at one hour fifty-six minutes, if you want to write that down, you can look for that. But that does need to be corrected because that was not the correct motion. And those were the only corrections that I had on the minutes.
I had clarification question and Dr. Meyer can probably clarify that. You already grabbed my other ones there with the create policy expectations. When we are talking, and since Dr. Meyer stated the district has almost completed the promised items from the plant facilities levy, should that be the instructional levy or was it the plant?
Yes.
It was the plant levy, okay.
Because the plant facility levy is expiring, so everything that we said that we do is almost done.
Okay, okay. I just know that you always give the little picture of where we are with the instructional, with all the.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that was my only question.
Any other meeting minutes, corrections, anything? Okay. Moving on to the HR items. Does anyone have any comments or questions on the memos that were attached for those, for the HR items?
Okay. I just have a clarifying, some clarifying questions. So it just, it looked as if some of the staff resigned in particular position to take another position.
Yeah, that happens.
That was my only question.
Nope. Okay. We're just, okay, and then we have the regular and special bills. Are there any questions on the large bills that are presented or the utilities that are presented?
How often do we have to purchase checks? AP checks? That was just one that we.
Yeah.
Not too often. Maybe once a year.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty, we're not, definitely the checks, how many checks we send out are reduced quite a bit with P card purchases and ACH. Those buildings still write some also.
Oh, right, okay.
You know, at the ASV level, but yeah, it's maybe once a year.
Okay. Thank you. Can I just make a statement for those that are watching that that was CFO Wallace that answered the question?
Yeah.
That's fine, because why, we did get that panel at the.
That's a good point.
I don't have.
Mr. Wallace, what is an ICCP overpayment? I just haven't seen that in a, okay, all right.
Yeah, that would be for the base program.
Oh, okay.
Some families qualify for childcare, so that's how they're able to participate.
Okay.
And so there must have just been an overpayment by the agency and we did a refund.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just, I haven't seen a big word, it kind of caught me off guard. Any other questions or concerns on the bills or the utilities? Okay, then I will entertain the motion regarding the consent agenda.
I move approval on the consent agenda.
One second.
Hearing motion and a second, all three say aye.
Aye.
And you closed. Hearing then the motion carries. Moving on to new business. First off, we have the MAP Curricular Advisory Committee Recommendation for the MAP.
This is the culmination of a lot of work by a lot of people and so we have a group here tonight. Dr. Pasley and I are not going to do a lot of talking. You get to actually hear from parents and students and teachers who use the programs, got to watch the programs in use. And so I'm going to let them, you know that will make you very sad. Going to let them introduce themselves and then we're just going to work through the presentation. So I should be able to start.
I'm Sheila Holmes. I have kids in the school districts and I've been, had kids since 2015. Mine was one of those seniors that we talked about that graduated last year.
I am Jackson, a third grader from Galloway Elementary.
I'm Corey Still. I teach eighth grade pre-algebra at Lakeland Middle School.
I'm Ben Dixby and I'm an eighth grader at Lakeland Junior High School.
I'm Lisa Mashburn. I teach fourth grade at Timberlake Elementary.
Heather Ogden, I teach second grade at Timberlake Elementary.
And Shannon Almonte, I'm sixth grade at Timberlake Middle School.
So first, all of these wonderful people, but I think we have a total of close to thirty, twenty to thirty teachers that participated in the pilot. Principals attended, lots of parents have come in and out of our monthly meetings and so we just want to thank everybody, want to thank you for giving us this wonderful opportunity. It's been really fun to just spend time with all the teachers and Dr. Meyer for allowing us to do this. So it's been a great experience and we're super excited that we finally get to make a recommendation.
Okay, so just for our patrons edification and then also just so that the board knows that we reiterated this several times to our committee that it is the board's legal responsibility to select and adopt all of our instructional materials. And so this committee that has worked so diligently since the beginning of the school year is an advisory committee. And so we recognize that tonight we are going to make our recommendation to the board. However, it is just a recommendation and the board is the one responsible for making the final determination, so.
I can say thank you, Dr. Meyer.
This is just a kind of a quick review of where we've been. We started this process in May of 2021 where we made the determination what materials we wanted to pilot. Dr. Pasley worked with the elementary teams and I worked with the secondary teams to contact publishers and get the materials in the summer of 2021. We had, we announced this process July of 2021. It was like, we have been doing this a long time. And then we, with the board's permission, sent out an application to our community for committee members. And we wanted that to be not just parents, but just community members in general. And then starting in September of 2021, we were diligent, met every month. We had an ongoing agenda. We did some teaching to each other, things of the programs we were using. So everybody got to kind of see what was really good about programs and where teachers were finding some stumbling blocks.
We got to do some observations.
Did in January.
Did four different observations to elementary, two at middle school.
Our parents got to go in and see some great instruction. And then at the February meeting, we pulled all of the quantitative qualitative data together and sat as an elementary team and a middle school team and really talked about the pros and cons of all of the programs that we had the opportunity to use this year.
It was a great discussion.
It was a really great discussion. And then unanimous decision by both teams for the program that we're bringing forward tonight.
And we were pretty strategic in this timeline with the hope that once we give that recommendation, then hopefully you'll approve and so we can have materials by September and ready to go. That's the end game for August.
Hey, so I was part of the parent group. I came in in November and started attending meetings. I spent a day in an elementary, going to three different elementary schools. I spent a day at the middle school, watching teachers. I've seen all of these programs, I Ready, Illustrative Math, and Eureka, taught at the elementary schools, some of them by multiple teachers in grade levels. And then I watched I Ready, Discovery Education, and Middle School Math being taught. I also asked, Dr. Sexton, to give me a printout of every program, the same lesson. So I asked for a first grade lesson teaching the same concept on all three programs and compared them and reviewed them and looked at them. As a parent, how I would be able to use them if I understood them. Did the same thing for secondary, so I was able to review those lesson plans and get an idea of what they each looked like for the same lesson.
And so I've taught for twenty-five years now and have those twenty-five years, five of it was second grade and all the rest was in middle school and all of it is included math at some level. And just as an educator in general, the shift that I've seen in math has probably been the biggest of all the content areas I've taught over the years. So in piloting this and seeing all the curriculum that we chose to pilot, we saw some of the same struggles across, in our conversations at the middle school level, what the programs were good at, they were all good at, what they weren't so great at was kind of a struggle with all of them, but they're all shifting in that same direction with that focus being on a deeper understanding. It's made me teach in a different way, it's making kids think in a different way, but it's also, you know, parents are having, you know, it's a struggle at home because it's not being taught the way they were taught. It's not being taught the way I started teaching. And so I've had to change the way I teach and the way I think, but I think it's made me a better teacher. And in the long run, I'm seeing the kids earning a better, deeper understanding of math. And we saw that in all the programs we piloted. So that was nice to see that the programs we chose to pilot were meeting the needs of what our kids, you know, especially whether it's ISATs or just where they're going out in understanding math in general. We chose the right programs to pilot, I think it was consistent.
I don't remember.
Same news. I'll talk about this one. So this is the rubric that we looked at from Ed Reports and I took every single individual teacher, we had parents do it. We pulled all of the data together and then there's each of these boxes and the slide before kind of just gives you the major areas. One of the things, if you, can you scroll down a little bit, Dr. Meyer? If it allows you to, this screen may not allow it.
I'll make it smaller.
Our teachers were great about really giving comments and details and.
This is frozen, that's why.
Yeah, it's okay. Specific to each of the categories and so you can kind of see, even though there were some major clusters that they really looked at, the two ones that we really felt were super important was in the rubric and across the rubric, the total points were two. But in these particular categories, so one A and one B, one A being grade level content, is it applicable content from earlier grades? And then one B being is the major focus of your work, specific to the standards you're supposed to be teaching. So that really speaks to that coherence piece. In the rubric, it was either a zero or a two, so either you had it or you didn't. And then in the other one, specific to coherence, it was either a zero or a four, so either you have it or you don't. Those two are weighted heavier than everyone else and so it was nice for us to see because Lisa and I spent a lot of time just really looking at what programs would we recommend, which ones would we present to the team and then having the teams look at it. And across the board in all of the programs that we piloted, everybody gave each of those a two and a four. So that really made us feel like, okay, so at the end of the day, whichever program we go with and recommend, we definitely feel like the rigor and the piece that we need for the kids or that we're putting in front of the kids was going to address what we needed it to address and bump that up so that we had that coherence and that vertical alignment. So instead of having you go through each of these, I compiled the data into a quantitative little slide.
I'm just showing them. I just want to point out, I just want people to know, this is a lot. You can look at this because it'll public record, but you can see this team has collected a lot of data and they did K five and six eight, but if you look at this, this is just, I just want everyone to see, you can see how much they've done. This is all data they've collected and put into here, so they've done a lot of work. I just want to.
It was a thirty-two page document. Like each teacher that piloted had to fill it out and then these guys compiled it.
And lots of notes. So these are kind of each of the categories that each, like each sub-test was linked under, so we just kind of wanted you to see all of these line to the link in the rubric.
We also asked the teachers when they were filling the rubric out that if, especially if they were giving a low score for, in one of those areas, that they provide some rationale or evidence so that when we started to have the conversation about programs, that that was kind of out the front of our minds. They, it was a lot of work and a very rigorous rubric, but the information that we gleaned from it was really good.
So we put together, just so you know, kind of our data collection and I think Shannon's going to go over the quantitative piece, but we sent out rubrics to every parent, or sent out surveys to every parent that participated that their student participated in a pilot. I think, I'd have to go back and look, there was over a hundred responses. Every teacher that participated in a pilot gave a response. Every student received a survey and I think we had two-hundred-and-fifty students give responses as well as we had all, every week, every month when we would meet, there was kind of a qualitative spreadsheet that the teachers could give input on, the parents could give input on. We also had another document that parents could give specific to the observation. So we really wanted to hear the entire time throughout the entire process, how are we feeling? How are people feeling? What is, what's the good, bad, and the ugly, like in September and January and February? So quantitative data or qualitative data is super hard to code because it's people's thoughts, it's words, it's meaning, it's not numbers. And so I went with an open code theme. So some of these themes here, these aren't my words, it's just once I saw it multiple times, I put a name to it. And then some of these quotes, they're actual quotes, it's not my verbiage. If, if it was a trend and a theme that I saw more than three times, then I pulled it out and put it in here. So there's definitely in all of the qualitative, there's lots of statements, but if it started to happen and it was a recurrence more than three times, then I put it in an anecdotal note for all of the programs. So what you're seeing is trends that, again, were said more than, more than three times. So there's one in here where I think one of the labels is actually confusing because that came up a lot. So I just put what it was actually said. So here's all of the qualitative data with, again, comprising all of those surveys that were sent out. And then here's the quantitative data.
And this is the compilation of the surveys that we filled out in all those numbers. It were great, put together into the data piece and I also wrote it into a graph. I think the graph spoke to us a lot in filling out the rubric, the other side that was really eye-opening. I have a student teacher with me right now. So I, and she'd been in my room for over a month by the time we did this. So she sat with me as I did the rubric and we had discussion. And to get that insight as a first-year teacher, because one of those pieces that we talked about is we want to choose a curriculum that if it was a first-year teacher, would give them the tools they need. And she commented prior to that day and then throughout the rubric that she feels like she could walk in, she's not a math major, she's an elementary major, doing secondary, you know, sixth grade math all day with me. And she said, this is so user-friendly and the number of tools that are there. She's young, she's ambitious, she's clicking on buttons left and right in the digital piece and finding things on her own. Things I've, through our PD. Or just because I'm a click-and-figure-it-out person also, I've got there. And she's like, oh, did you know? It'll do this, no, she does. So she was able to navigate those things. And that really eye-opening for me, as I filled that rubric out also. Both parts of it, I probably would have answered differently had I not had her insight. I was like, oh, this really is a high score for that. Because she was, she's brilliant.
So can we go back to the K5 really quickly, Dr. Meyer? I just want to point out to, for the board, the blue is I Ready data and how the teacher scored that rubric. And then the yellow bar is the Eureka math. And you can see that there are some places where Eureka's pretty high and pretty consistent with the scores we got for I Ready. And then you can see that some of those tailed off toward the end. But one of the things when we did observations with parents, and Sheila was with us consistently, that we talked about was the usability for teachers and for guest teachers. That was a question that kept coming up. How easy is this going to be if we have a guest teacher in the classroom? But when Heather was talking to the parents about her experience with Eureka math, one of the things that I think came out really loud and clear for the parents was the amount of prep time it took for her to prepare to teach the Eureka lesson. So even though there are some really strong pieces to the program, that our parents were really cognizant of the fact that at the elementary level, our teachers have to prep for seven or eight subjects every single day. And we can't have a program that's requiring two hours of prep time.
And I did watch a guest teacher use the I Ready program in a classroom. And I love the fact that it's easy for her to use. So my kids aren't losing instruction time. They're not doing busy work because the teacher's not there. The guest teachers can come in and use it. I could go in and understand and use it. It walked me through steps.
So I just want you to know that that was a part of the conversation. Thank you.
And this was all of the rubric that came in. And we compiled this. And so a huge part of our conversation was just going through. And there were some surprises because, again, everybody did it, you know, their own rubric in isolation. So it was kind of cool to just see it all culminate together, so.
And at the middle school level, we came into that last meeting before we saw this data, thinking that our discussion was going to be a little bit more complex and maybe even a little more contentious.
Well, and you can see that our data is definitely much closer than the elementary's data was. But we, we left and even the teachers who strongly supported mid-school math, they're like, the numbers don't lie here. And, and our numbers are much closer than, than they are to the elementary. And they came away with, this is, this is a simple choice for us. And the fact that we can have a K8 program all together and we can start using the, the same language and the vocabulary. And the rigor's there. I mean, I, I teach this stuff, the rigor's there. And it, it's going to take a little bit of time to get our kids, especially at that later middle school level. But with time, it, it should be there. And we should be able to move a little bit faster than maybe I'm moving right now.
So this is the recommendation.
It's the first time that I can remember in the 31 years that I've been here, Bob might correct me from my very early years in the district. But it's been pretty typical that we've had an elementary adoption and then a sixth through 12th grade adoption. So we were, as a team, really excited that the data came out the way that it did and that we are able to recommend to the board a K8 adoption with just that vertical alignment with regard to strategies taught, the vocabulary that's taught, the expectation for how, how the lessons are put together. So kids come into seventh grade knowing how to talk to each other about math because they've been doing it for several years.
So I won't have to try and figure out how to tell them with their homework a different way every time.
There's a transition.
So, hey, so Jackson, what do you like about I Ready, I Ready now? What's your favorite thing about it? We wrote stuff down in case he got nervous.
The Pathways. Pathways program on the computer.
What's that? Tell me a little bit about the Pathways program.
So the Pathways, it's kind of like a digital math book. And it walks you through the steps. And if you did it wrong twice, I think, then it'll walk you through the problem. And then you'll get it right the next time.
Is doing math with I Ready easy or is it really hard?
It is neither. It's in the middle because there's some questions that are kind of challenging and others that are a little bit easier.
What do you like about your math book?
I like that it has tools that help you. And a teacher can show it up on the board so we can do exactly what you, so that she can show us and then we can do exactly what we need to.
So you're following along with the teacher?
Yeah.
Do you get bored with math or do you want to quit trying it?
No, it, on the book, it's got fun activities, like the way it does, does math problems. And on the Pathways on the computer, it's just the same thing.
Thank you.
You want to add anything, Ben? No?
But come on, Ben, tell us what you think. It, it puts you in a spot where, it puts you in a spot where you understand a little bit about what you're going through. But it doesn't make it so easy that you can fly right through it. And it puts you where you know a little bit, but you don't know some of it as well. So it will teach you how to complete one problem. And then it'll increase the difficulty slightly on the next problem. And you can use the skills that you learned from the last problem to get the next problem done.
All five, I'm sure the three at the middle school and so maybe help me with the elementary. But at the, the three programs we piloted at the middle school, the, I think one of the biggest focus, focus is, was the relevancy. Everything that the kids are doing is taught through real-world application. And we were actually in Mr. Still's classroom, watching him teach about slope intercept. And the question was, it was all about how tall plants had grown. And so the kids were plotting things. And then the question was, what does the Y-intercept actually mean in this, in this problem? And I'm really good at math and I couldn't, I didn't, I didn't know the answer. Because when I was in school, we just learned, plugged the numbers in. And I could find slope intercept all day long. I've never one time in my adult life ever used it. And so I always, I always, I remember questioning, why am I learning this? Because I don't have any idea why this is important. And so we stayed in his classroom an extra long time because I wanted to know what the answer was.
And I think speaking of something that Shannon was talking about is there has been a shift in math. And we used to always be up for the what, the what, the what. What is the answer? What is the answer? And now we're so much into the why and the how. And that triggers the discussions we have. We don't, we don't spend 50 minutes on 30 problems anymore. We spend 50 minutes on what, like, three, four? And we, and we try to get in discussion, you know, in eighth grade. I mean, Ben's here because Ben helps lead discussions in class. And, you know, trying to get eighth graders to navigate in discussions is hard. But that is what we're after. We're after the why and the how and not just the what. We want to see that, that connection. And, you know, I only piloted one program, but I Ready provides that. And the Pathways, the Pathways super, it does such a great job of, of finding kids where they're at. Our kids are behind, unfortunately, our kids are behind right now. And if they're willing to get on and do the Pathway, that is, that is the place that they can start patching those gaps at their own pace. And it's the one place that I give.
Extra credit.
I give extra credit. I, I hate extra credit, but if kids are willing to go do their Pathway here, I, I need you to patch your gaps. I can't teach fourth grade math. I have to teach eighth grade math. So you go work on your path and you're willing to do more, then I'm going to give you points for that. And, and our diagnostic test is so valuable. Like tomorrow at the, at the student ID conferences, you know, we could give parents ISAT data and it wouldn't mean a thing to them. It would say advanced, proficient, basic, below basic. And, and that's it. And then parents leave with, they're like, I, I don't know what this means. But tomorrow, my kids for math, they've got their diagnostic scores, they've got their fall scores. And we have five areas that we teach in. And it tells you exactly what grade level they're at. Then we took it again in the winter. And now they have, they have, where did I go up? Where did I go now? Where do I keep working? And, you know, numbers and operations, that makes some sense to parents. Algebra, practice, so these are concepts that actually make sense. And we have the data and we have, we have the, the Pathway and the diagnostic test. And this all seems to work really well together. And, and our training that we've had from I Ready, Donna Gray has been fabulous. And she's, she's given us just enough each time, you know, not. She could have, she could have bombarded us in September with all this material. And we were like, oh my gosh, this is too much. But she knew what to give us in September. And we met again in.
October, because she said, October's going to, in a chance you in October, you're going to feel like you hit the bottom and you don't know if you can get out because it's just a lot. And your kids are struggling and you're struggling because it's such a shift. And she's right.
And we met again end of January.
Yeah.
Beginning of February. And now she gave us some more. She's like, hey, check this out. And I, that training's going to be there and she wants to be with us. And I, I'm going to strongly endorse I Ready.
Yeah, stop, Cory.
That assessment piece that you were talking about is separate. And you guys have already kind of committed to, we use I Ready as our diagnostic tool and we use it K through 8. And that's not going to change. We're using that regardless. The beauty of going with I Ready as a curriculum, the pieces, and we learn more of this with Donna in this last one, the amount of information we can take from that diagnostic and apply it directly to our daily teaching to help with those, not just the kids that are filling the gaps in our MTSS kiddos that we're doing small group instruction with, but even in our regular classroom, it is all married together. So knowing they're taking the diagnostic and we're using it, it's a phenomenal tool. And we'll have the Pathway, knowing whether we go with I Ready or not, but to have the Pathway and the curriculum that goes with it and know that they fit together in all those pieces, those next layers that she's like, oh, and there's more. Like, okay, we'll get that next year. So we know because we're not ready for it yet. But it is, it fits, it's such a powerful way to help, especially with COVID and the gap of learning that's there. Like we're seeing incredible growth with our kids. They're behind and it's a struggle. The rigor that's there and the kids that are behind grade level, it makes it that much harder for them to access this material. So having that Pathway and having it fit with the curriculum we're going with, that piece was the other part of our conversation in middle school. It just makes sense that that's going to be what's best for the kids.
And it's all through the lens of growth.
Yeah.
So it's just moving along and every kid makes those gains.
And the kids have buy-in. They're able to look at their scores, they can track their own progress, they know what they need to work on, and they have the buy-in. They do something on their path and they don't get it, they go back with, well, what did I do? You know, you can, they can look it up and they have that buy-in and that instant feedback that they need. And they're excited about it.
So let's keep that. Eighth grade, unfortunately, sometimes fades.
So one of the, before we pass this one, one, one of the pieces of this key shift in math, and I know we talked about it, I just want to reiterate it, is that when I was learning math, we were taught one way to do it. There's, there's one right way to do it to get the one right answer. While we know that math is an exact science and there is always one right answer, there are a lot of ways for our kids to get there. And all of the programs that we piloted honored the different strategies and the ways that kids think about math. And all of them were designed to move from some of those concrete models to the more efficient algorithm that we all use as adults. But for some kids, the multiplication algorithm is never going to make sense. And they never can remember to put those zeros as placeholders as they're multiplying. But there are other models. Lisa teaches at fourth grade. The, the partial product and the area model. There are other models that kids can use for their entire lives that work just as well and for them might be the most efficient way. So that's one, that's a big shift. And these programs support, I Ready does a great job of supporting that.
One of the things I noticed when I was reviewing the lesson plans is that I Ready says, you may hear this, which means your student has a misconception and this is how you address it. And I never would have thought, I would have just said, oh, no, that's wrong. But it tells you how to fix their misconception and tells you what words to look for so you know they're not understanding.
There's a strong parent guidance component of I Ready that was nice. So if you want to be able to support your child at home, not just digitally, but from the workbook, there is, there's a strong component there too.
The parents will get a newsletter every week to tell them what their kid is going to learn. But what I told Lisa and Lynn after we did all the study, because I did Eureka, I kind of jumped ship and went over to I Ready. Because I, oh, I did the training, I did the training. So sorry now. But after, after we, after we got, grabbed all the information and I, I did, and the kids love it. They get to have conversations every day. They get to, they get to describe what they need to pull from the question because it is, it's maybe three questions at the most, what, what they're going to learn? How are they going to learn it? There's different strategies that they come up with where Eureka is like, so this is what we want you to learn. And this is how you're going to learn it. And this is, and so it was, we taught it, I taught it. But some of the kids, it just didn't work with their brain. And before this year, I was always able to lay out strategies on my back table. The kids could go out or go to the back table anytime they wanted to grab a word for their brain. They couldn't do that September through February. So that was kind of, that was a sad piece, being a teacher, to try to have them do that. So that's why I jumped ship. And, and we, and they, they take the I Ready test. They've taken it for a couple of years now. And so it puts them on their pathway of their knowledge. And so I have kids in second grade with questions of fractions, multiplication, division. So they're, you know, my higher learners, obviously. But if we didn't have that piece of it, which Eureka doesn't, then they couldn't go kind of beyond that. They would have to, you know, yeah, kind of be stuck. Or during intervention time, me pulling together pieces, which that's what I did until I left. Sorry, Dr. Meyer.
You got the data before you jumped ship. That's really good. Fidelity. Fidelity to be piloted, that's important.
And so Lisa and I kind of just put this together per curriculum cycle and we linked this in. And we actually haven't had a chance to chat with all the teachers. We just went off of what was rated really high and had the, the best correlation from Ed Reports. So this is just a preliminary. But we just kind of wanted you to see what we were thinking. And, you know, again, we don't want a full program that isn't rated really high so that we can be competitive. So we looked at K8 science and then 9 through 12 math for this whole process for next year.
Do you know we need a science program?
I met with.
So you get to see us again every month. Bring me that program.
So we just, right, we just wanted you to know that we're, we have the plan to move forward with the blessing of the board, so.
And so in a lot of the, in all of the programs, we recognize that the rigor is pretty substantial. And so we kind of just wanted to outline for you what some of our summer work and what our plan is. Across the board, recognizing that we need to bridge that gap and scaffold for our kids. So these are just some of the things that we, Lisa and I came up with when then we talked to the elementary and secondary principals. And then this is some of their brainstorming too. And teachers will have additional feedback specific to some of the summer work. But really recognizing with this new adoption, we definitely have some work to do to, to bridge that gap from where we are to where we need to be with our, with our students and instruction.
And that's it. Questions, comments, thoughts?
Well, first, thank you for the great presentation and for all your hard work and dedication for every student in this district.
for every student in this district. Thank you very much.
Team did a really great job.
Yes.
They were fun to work with.
So there's also a workbook, a physical textbook for some of our students.
There's a teacher's edition and a student edition for reading, writing, and math, actually.
So one thing that's really nice about the workbook is so they are, yeah, well, it is consumable. And then, so online, they go into Clever, they log into I Ready. And then they, they go into the bookshelf and their book comes up. And they have access to everything that the book has is online. But then if they, let's say they miss a day of class and I'm on lesson 11, session three, there's a teacher that goes through the pages that we would be going through. So the video component of that and all of those middle, the middle sessions of every lesson has. It doesn't, there's no video for the intro and there's no video for the finish. But those middle lessons where you're really trying to develop the thinking, there's a teacher that walks through those exact pages that we would be doing in class.
And I watched a teacher teach students online and in class because they had some absences. And she was using I Ready. And she said, those online, go to this page of your book. And they had exactly what the students sitting there with the workbook have. In another class, the kids got to pick, did they want their workbook or did they want their computer to do the lesson? And they got to choose which one they preferred.
It's nice of that digital component just because if you leave your book at school and you're now home or vice versa, then there's another way to access the same material. So you're not losing.
And I've used the textbook in my classroom, but they don't leave my classroom. So they're not having to pack their books around and they can access it from home. I link the pages into my Google Slides so that if they're not at school or if they want to finish work at home, they don't have to pack it back and forth. But it is, they do physically so they can work it out. They're not having to do the work on. I mean, there's some pieces to that, like you said, the flexibility where they can work it out on whiteboard that I didn't have with Illustrated Math that we have before because I wasn't a textbook. But to give that option also because some of those kids are pretty high functioning at the digital level. So there's some components to that. The slideshow that he referred to, they are seeing the exact same question online. It's an already built slideshow that they've created for us. And they see on the board exactly where they should be and what they should be doing. And the kids can go, my kids now, and it took a long time to get there. Because that's trying to talk to your neighbor and talking about math they're not comfortable with. I now have kids that are like, and I used to be, I don't know what to write. I don't know what to do. Is this right? Will you help me now? It's, can I show my strategy? Can I show my strategy? They want to get up there and share their thinking and to see that shift, that's where I want my kids to go. It doesn't need to be me teaching them. It's them getting comfortable talking about their math, turning to their neighbor, asking them the questions. I mean, seeing that shift happen in my classroom as the years gone on. So that's been really exciting to watch.
Some of the comments from parents have been specifically, they can see those pieces. And so they know how it was taught, how it was laid out, how it was rolled out. So the digital access transparency piece, if a parent wants to be able to come alongside, it's all there and lined out for them. So that's a strategy for I Ready that I don't think the other programs did as well.
So those students who might not have internet or might have not reliable internet or they're in a home that's technologically challenged where there is nobody to help them online have access, unfettered access to a physical book.
In fact, Donna for second grade, she kind of, when she taught second grade, she used the slides. Sometimes she would use the book, but most of the time she would use the slides. Her kids would bring out their math journals and they could write answers and journal as she walked around the room. And it would open up a whole nother avenue for, for teaching. And I had parents message me when I did Eureka and say, what in the world is going on? Can you call me? I don't understand this. And then now it's like, what have you changed with math? I mean, so it's nice, it's nice to know that the kids are going, referencing that they like math or that they get bummed out because they're not the ones chosen to come up and represent their ideas on the board. Even at second grade, it's just, it's pretty cool to see them talking, conversing. And as you're walking around, you hear their answers. And so it's, it's pretty neat.
It gives two or three expected strategies in there. But I daily have a kid that can show a strategy that isn't even one that the textbook expected. And with having my student teacher, she's like, man, some of these kids, like, their thinking is so creative. I would have never done it that way. But it encourages that. And the kids are now trying to embrace that. So it's been really a fun process to be a part of. Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming tonight.
Thanks you guys.
Thanks Ben.
Do we need to have any discussion on the,
I just have one question maybe for Lisa or, very impressive presentation. Pretty clear what everybody's choosing. My question is, did you do any cost basis analysis of the programs?
No. We did not. We really went into it looking for the best program for the kids. Recognizing that just from previous experience, they're all in the same kind of ballpark. So a full-blown adoption is a significant dollar investment in the district. Five hundred thousand dollars when you're talking about a six-year adoption. So because the, historically, they've all been kind of in the same ballpark, we, we just really didn't want to take the best program off the table because it was a little bit more expensive. So we could certainly provide that for you if you're interested. But the other part of that is we're already paying for part of the program because the board has been wonderful in providing for us the diagnostic and the pathways. And that part's already been purchased. And then we already have all of our teacher's editions. Because when we did the pilot, they provided those for all of our teachers, even the teachers who were using other programs. So the cost for us will really be just that six-year print cycle for the,
The consumables?
And then the digital access each year.
But we really went through what was gonna be best instructional for the kids. Like, that was the focus.
Sure.
So, and really when we went through ed reports and looking at different programs, we only took the ones that were rated really high, specific to instruction and those components. So there were definitely ones that we could have looked at, but either the coherence was not strong or the teacher usability wasn't strong. So if they weren't, if they didn't have the highest markings, we didn't even look at them. But if you're interested, we certainly could provide them.
Will all of those materials be available, of course?
Well, then at this time, I will entertain a motion regarding the recommendation to adopt I Ready Math for K through eight.
I agree to accept the recommendation to use I Ready Math, K through eight.
Is that good?
Sometimes traumatic.
I have a question. If we vote to accept the recommendation, what exactly does that mean?
It means that you're giving us permission to then purchase the materials so that they can receive them and start professional development. Be available for teachers to start with this in the fall. And this will be the adopted curriculum for K eight for the district.
We don't know how much it costs. And we haven't seen it. I mean, I appreciate all the work and the recommendation and bringing it to the board. Here's our choosing, but I don't, okay, that answers my question. I'm sorry.
We do a schedule in a second or four. We do, but we can also have further discussion.
Yeah. That's only, my only, I mean, I don't know what the cost is and I don't know.
But to say, so to say, with board approval of the cost, we approve it pending the board's approval of the cost of the program.
Well, it was my understanding that the math, that the curriculum would be in the ballpark, which that ballpark could be huge. But I'm thinking five hundred thousand dollars because that's what's been brought to us repetitively when we talk about curriculum. Because my desire was science because we have not adopted anything in quite some time. And from the teacher's perspective, it was, no, please let us do math. So we chose to go with math. My assumption was five hundred thousand. The top line that we're not going to go over. But if we would like to table this until we have the, the material and the value of what we're purchasing, I'm not opposed to that. I do want to be cognizant though, yes, of the time. Because I, if, I want to make sure that if we do vote to approve this, that we already will put it in place and they have the materials to start the year correctly.
One of the factors, and maybe you can help us out, with the materials themselves, and I've heard you talk about textbooks. Is it, are there textbooks virtually all the way through? And are there disposable materials that will have to be purchased every year to support the program?
So the teacher's editions are already paid for. We have all of those. And we actually have extra. They have been very generous there. What we are actually paying for is the consumables and the digital component. We've used the diagnostic. We've been paying that. I think this is our second year, third year. So what we're really paying for is the K eight consumable and the digital component.
And with, with the advent of the digital age and the digital part and the consumable, it's a, it's a six-year print cycle. So we pay upfront for those consumables. And then once we pay for forty-seven hundred or minus the high school kids, it's a one-time payment that we pay. And then we get those each year for the six years. We don't have to pay for those consumables each year.
Okay, because that's certainly a very different.
Yes, yeah. So it's different than what we used to do.
Thank you.
Mr. Wallace, is there any way you may be able to tell us thus far what we've invested in I Ready for the diagnostic, for the pathways, for the teacher literature?
No, off the top of my head, after resume reports, actually, if I have a passive, right, that's a better idea than I did.
I have not looked at the numbers in the file.
I, I do recall them coming across our table.
They were large.
And they were very large. They were like a hundred.
I'm sorry.
How many students are K through eight?
K eight is probably, well, we're forty-seven hundred kids. And we're, it's probably, most of them would be, three of them would be, yeah. There's thirteen hundred at roughly at Lakeland High School. And fourteen hundred, so five thousand minus fourteen hundred. Thirty-six hundred, thirty-three hundred. Yeah, about thirty-three hundred K eight. We have the enrollment there. Maybe a question on, with respect to timing and the ordering of the materials. Have you worked with the vendor enough to know what their time schemes are not to?
In a normal, in a normal world without COVID, initially, they were really, I mean, we got it pretty quickly with all of the supply issues and worker, you know, employee issues. It has been a little bit longer than normal. They're great to work with. They're probably one of the best companies. They're super responsive, but, you know, they can only do what they can do. So some of our backup orders where if we've had more kids and we needed to order more consumables, maybe took two weeks. It's taken eight weeks. So, but it's, there's not anything they can do about it, you know?
The other piece of that, as far as timing goes, is for some teachers, when you're giving them a new program, they prefer professional development right after school ends so that they have the materials in their hands and they've had some professional development around how to use the program so they can think through what instruction's gonna look like and do some planning over the summer. And some teachers prefer to have some professional development right before school starts so it's all fresh in their minds. So the, probably the biggest hiccup, I think, as far as timing goes that we wanted to try to navigate is to be able to secure some professional development for the middle of June for teachers. And those dates fill up quickly. So we did let Donna Gray and Vicky Lang from Curriculum Associates, who is the, that's the parent company, that we were recommending I Ready to the board. So they are ready to work with us. So depending on, if it's April thirteenth, we can just let them know that on April fourteenth, if the board approves the adoption, we'll be on the phone to schedule professional development. But we, we can definitely provide for you prior to the next board meeting the estimated cost for the district based on the number of kids we have right now. And then also have out the district office for your perusal of the materials.
Okay, that would be perfect. And then in providing those costs, could you also do a comparison with the other programs so that we can see where we were respecting that all of the programs were highly marked? So that we can just see, you know, if everything was in the ballpark or if, you know, we're going with the top of the line and we're paying the top of the line price, so to speak.
I would say at the elementary level, there, I don't know that we can say that the other two programs, although the rigor or the coherence was strong, when you looked at the usability parts, they, I Ready is just significantly stronger program than the other two. For the middle school, they're very close. So I think that would be a fair comparison.
And we will likely, since the dollars will be there, to use some of the ESAR funds because it's sort of one-time cost for the federal dollars. And it dovetails with the use of those funds to address learning loss and things like that. So, you know, that's, initially with some of that, you know, we still have ESAR dollars available for us for probably a couple of years. And so it seems to be a good use of those dollars.
I have some, in gathering that information, is there any, or maybe you can find out from the publisher being that we're sort of consolidating and trying to use as many of their pieces as we can, right? If there is any discount or if it's, you know, how, what does that look like?
That's typical, yes.
You know, what are, you know, things are, anyways, growing the use of their, of their, and then I did have one other question I meant to ask earlier before everyone left, and I won't keep you too long, is what do you think the transition looks like from eighth grade to ninth grade math? Is that you think, I'm not sure what we're using in ninth grade math. I don't remember.
We're using big ideas. And in talking to the high school math teachers, so that last slide was K eight science. But now I really want to spend some time with our high school math teachers looking at programs. But what, the conversation that I had with them was algebra instruction is algebra instruction. And so they, they are not concerned that, that we have a different program at ninth grade than we do at eighth grade. What they are really hoping is that when the kids leave eighth grade, that they actually have the eighth grade standards mastered because it helps them with their ninth grade instruction. So that wasn't a concern for them.
You just wouldn't, you know, I loved that cohesiveness between the K through eight. But if we're getting a lingo down and, you know, changing a little bit, I just, I'm curious.
And there was no K twelve program.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
That, so that, that wasn't even an option. That was at least highly rated.
Right, right, yeah. I wouldn't expect it to be possibly from the same, from the,
To your,
Same vendor maybe, but.
Right. To your other question that you asked previously about the discounts, it has been my experience when we're adopting a program that if you just use bits and pieces, like the pathways and the diagnostic, that we're probably paying a little bit more because we're using just that one piece of the program. And that when you put the whole thing together, there are discounts of that. Because they, they recognize that for school districts, money does not grow on trees. And we have a limited supply of it. And they want to be competitive.
From an instructional standpoint, it's better that, what we really pushed is our hope is that eighty-five percent of our material comes from our core. And we might have to supplement specific to a lesson here or there because we need a little bit more time or pace or whatever. But the hope is that we're not piecemealing because then the coherence and vertical alignment breaks. So the goal is that, you know, we're strategic in that piece so that we're not creating holes. That's what we're trying to avoid.
No gaps, yeah. Or as minimal gaps where you can help it, yeah. Yeah, I agree, yeah.
And just generally, we haven't had a large curriculum adoption since I've been here. I was at Cortlande, so this is, you know, five years ago, four years ago, we were budgeting about one point three million dollars for like a science adoption. And there are about ten thousand kids. We're forty-five hundred. So, I mean, when they were, for Lakeland, saying half a million dollars, didn't surprise me. Just knowing what it was costing for a larger district and it was sort of proportional.
And our last adoption was seven years ago and it was math and it was about five hundred thousand. So that was seven years ago.
I have complete confidence in the team and their recommendation and all that. I would just like to know what I, dollar figure I'm eyeing.
Yep. And we were so focused on the program that I'm sorry.
They did awesome.
We're happy to do that.
Yes, absolutely.
It's only prudent that we ask.
Absolutely. As soon as you ask the question, I.
They'll certainly.
We missed that.
Send us a, a formal quote, I'm sure.
Yes, yes, they will.
That would be awesome.
Provide that for you.
Okay. And again, when you do provide that, please provide it with a comparison with the other programs.
So we'll just send it to the five board members and CC Dr. Meyer when we have the information so that you have that prior to the board meeting. That's.
Yep, that'd be perfect.
Awesome. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Awesome. Motion in a second. Shall I ask, do I ask for withdrawal? Do we take a vote or?
It's appropriate to table until the next meeting. Table consideration of that motion until the next meeting.
Okay, all right. So at this time, I'd like to table consideration of that motion until the next board meeting.
Regular board meeting.
Well, if we should choose to have a special and want to bring that then, I'd like to keep that option open. So just until the next one.
And was that a motion to table?
Yes, it's a motion to table.
Then I have a second motion.
Hearing a motion in a second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, moving on to the. Curriculum, the supplemental resources for board consideration. Did anyone have any comments or questions on this? I do.
I.
What I, and my comment actually stems from the parent input. On math made fun centers and the bundle, are those, if you buy the bundle, does that include the centers?
So she's mistaken. So the bundles is separate, but this, those two things are from teacher paid teachers and so you buy a license. So even if they were included, if we, to be ethical, if we wanted another teacher to be able to use it, we would buy it separately. But the centers is totally different than the bundle and the bundle is not inclusive of the centers.
Oh, okay.
So when she saw that I had the same thought and then I went through it and it's, it's not the same, so.
Okay, and these are individual teachers are asking for these resources? Oh, okay.
For an intervention.
Okay, got it. That makes.
I had to do a follow-up because I wasn't sure either.
Well, I saw the comment and I thought, hey, thank you for pointing me back.
Yeah, me too.
Teachers too, so.
Just on the one for Timberlake High School, like what class is that for?
It's actually for the library and was written by Tori, you could tell, at Timberlake High School, one of our staff members. She wrote it under a pen name and so our librarian, Mrs. Boren, would like to have a signed copy of the book in the library for our kids.
It's kind of cool because it offers some homeopathic methods.
No, I, I thought it was great and that's why I was like.
I did see the, I did see the parent comment wondering how we were going to use that to teach kids. It's, it's a library book.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Then I will entertain a motion regarding the supplemental resources. We'll move to approve the supplemental resources as submitted.
Certainly.
Hearing a motion in a second. All favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to board policy, K. This was a lot of work. This, what we're bringing before the board is policy thirty-ten. You have two different drafts and policy thirty-ten deals with our open enrollment. Or actually it deals with our enrollment options and choosing whether or not we want to maintain what we currently do, which is accepting children that live in our district and outside of our district. The parallel policy is actually just accepting students who reside within our district. And if we did that, that policy then, you know, allows for transfers between schools. So if a child lives in one zone but wants to go to school in a different zone, yeah. So like if a child goes slated for Garwood, but they want to go to Twin Lakes, they can if all the pieces of the puzzle fit together correctly. And this policy talks about doing that. There was significant. We previously had policy three zero zero five, which strictly dealt with the transfer component. And thirty-ten, we didn't have. So am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, thirty-ten, we didn't have. So thirty-ten is actually a recommendation from ISBA for policy to address transfers and out-of-district students. The reason we brought both components is the board needs to decide if we are going to continue to maintain accepting out-of-district transfers. Given our enrollment numbers, I think that's a heavy conversation that we need to have if we're going to continue to just keep our borders open, so to speak. The transfers, the reason the policy, you'll see all the crossouts, is we actually talked with Dr. Pasley. What does this district actually do? Because the procedures that ISBA put in there were blanket procedures that didn't necessarily apply to how our district handles what we do. And the procedures will be the same whether or not we accept in and out or whether we just accept in. Because they have the district leadership team. There's, there's a lot of components involved. It was pretty cookie cutter for ISBA of, you know, the parent goes to the school and the principal does this. And it's not that that doesn't work, but that doesn't work within our district because they already have a well mapped out procedure of how they handle this. The biggest component is we need to have a discussion about if we're going to continue to take out-of-district students into our district. So I'm opening up that for discussion before we continue with this policy.
I'm glad you framed it that way.
Okay.
Because that's, that's a deep concern, I think, particularly if year after year we face, you know, two, three, four hundred new students into the district, you become overwhelmed rather quickly.
Right.
I guess one question that maybe we need to know the background is, you know, how many students currently are from outside the district?
I sent you guys, I sent you a report in the board update of all the students that we had accepted or denied. I can get the numbers for you, but there's several that are grandfathered. In the last two years, we haven't taken any out-of-district except for there's a few cases and a few exceptions, but we haven't. Our policy has been not to take out-of-district. If they have any sort of, there's, if a bullying harassment in a different district, we might take a, a couple of students or if they have a sibling. But even at the elementary schools, out-of-district, we aren't allowing siblings to start new because of our growth in enrollment.
How about children of employees?
Staff waivers, we take every staff, every staff employee can bring their students, their kids. And all the surrounding districts do that as well. If we didn't accept staff waivers, that would be a huge detriment to our staff.
Yeah, I understand that, but you know, we need to have a total picture, I guess is why.
There, I sent you the spreadsheets. You have all the spreadsheets. I shared them with you.
Where, where, I don't see them. I know that we saw some.
I'll resend them to you guys. That's all of it.
Post falls is open enrollment, right? So anybody from anywhere can go there?
When the COVID hit, all three districts closed their borders.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, all three with COVID. And now everyone is exactly in the same boat where they're being very, very careful about who they're willing to take because post falls is going to be running the bond soon. They don't want any of our student. They don't want any students moving there. Cortlande is the same way. Pretty much almost all districts are shutting down their borders because people are moving from out of state into our area at such an alarming rate that we, that we just can't handle the influx of students. So it's really, I mean, you can see what I, and I'll share it again, share these again with you. But you can see that it's a very low number that we've taken the last two years.
Do you have a recommendation?
I, myself, I always think it's better to have an open door policy that you can restrict your procedures and say, it may happen, instead of saying it won't happen because if somehow two years from now enrollment drops or, you know, a bond passes and a new school's there and you have to find that sweet spot between the amount of kids that are there and the facilities you have to get the funding. So i- if it was up to looking at what the numbers are and if there's room in a school that you allow kids in right now for the last two years, the answer's been no.
Last year we did heavily revamp, or maybe it was the year before, I don't remember now, even their residency proof and a bunch of other things because we did have a lot of people coming into the district that we found that were not actually living in the district. We have the ability through statute, which you're probably aware of, for open enrollment, they call it non-resident, whether they're out of state or in the state. If they're out of the district, they would be considered non-resident to create an agreement with surrounding districts and out-of-state districts. If the student is coming from that district, we can charge tuition. If there is an agreement, that district the student was coming, would come from, would have to fund the student being in our district. You know, obviously space, that doesn't help through space, you know? But that is statutorily another option, I suppose.
Well, I think the biggest frustration I had is respecting that we have this open door policy, but then we're saying no. But then the constituents are frustrated at the growth. And even though they may not understand how many kids actually are or are not in our district, they're aware. We have kids in our district that, you know, they don't live here, so we're not collecting tax dollars. And so their tax dollars are paying for this. And I just think, given the extensive amount of growth we have, I would feel more comfortable supporting closing the borders until we either A, have another one or two or three schools so that we can go back down to our small school environment comfortably and give that to our, our parents and the kids. Because that's what everybody wants, but the dollar can only go so far. And when you can come in, because we are open, even though it's supposedly a case-by-case basis, I just think it sends a better message to the taxpayer that we're respecting the fact that we're just going to educate our children with their tax dollars instead of everybody in the mother. But that's my opinion, so. I do think that, you know, if we were to choose to do that, I would also want kids that are in high school to know that if they're out of our district, then they can go through high school and graduate. Because I know it's a critical period in a kid's life at the high school level. And I wouldn't want to tell a junior, well, you're not grandfathered in, go to the school that you're, you know, if you live in Cortlande, you have to go to Cortlande High.
So you're suggesting that grandfather students.
At the high school. I would.
If they're currently.
If they're currently enrolled, to make this transition to close our borders, then to, which sounds really different, but to make our district whole. I would suggest that we take that into consideration and make sure that the high school students can see out their high school career. I mean, if their parents decide, okay, fine, I'm going to pull my kid, then that's on the parent. But as a district, I think it's a courtesy we should grandfather high school students in. Do you have any further input, Dr. Meyer?
I'm, I'm great. I just wanted to save you time if you guys put a policy, if there was some leeway that you could, because I've just seen a lot of enrollment go like this over the years, not that that's going to happen in our district anytime soon, but just to give the latitude for depending on sizes. Because I have been in areas where they are trying to get as many kids as possible because they just need to have a few more students to fill up to make it cost-effective for a school. So I just would hate to see us make too restrictive of a policy and then four or five years down the line, you're back at the drawing board again, which I know you're supposed to review your policy annually, so maybe that's not a big deal.
And this is one of the policies that is states. We do review annually.
Yeah.
But with respect to that, I would much rather, I mean, you come to us and say, we have a situation here. You know, numbers are in the toilet. We need to just, because I look at it, I know Garwood's crowded. I know Betty Kiefer's crowded. I know Twin has crowding. I know John Brown has, I mean, everybody has crowding. So I really think that if.
Timberlake Middle School.
Yeah, juniors or middles and the high schools.
Yeah.
Everybody's crowded.
Yeah.
So I, I don't foresee us having an immediate issue in probably two to three to five years.
And I would tell you that there's ample precedent in the school district in the past to close it off entirely and then reopen it on occasion. We've gone through these cycles before where we became crowded and we made the effort to avoid becoming overcrowded based on the fact that we have kids from outside the district coming in and also cognizant of the fact that, you know, parents were going to be asked to support building them a new school. And that issue will come up that, you know, why are we building a new school when you already have kids coming from outside the school district?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we have to be aware of all of that.
Right.
So there's three, there's the out-of-district ones and has the staff waivers and then there's in-zone. And so there's three spreadsheets that I'm going to send out right now so that you can look at them now and ask questions or you can look at them at your leisure.
You could just close the borders too and then put in there something like case-by-case basis too, can you?
We could. Unfortunately, I think that gives a very. To me, that opens the door up for a whole different realm of liability.
Well, because of question of fairness, I think.
Yeah, yeah, because why does my kid get to come but yours doesn't or neighbors and we don't live in the district? So I, I don't want to put the district in that position or the superintendent or anybody that makes those decisions. I don't think that would be fair. And, you know, honestly, if a parent really wants their child to come, then move into the district. I know housing is, it's not fun right now, but there are solutions.
Mark, can you put that up on the screen for us?
The, the spreadsheets? Yeah, they're pretty comprehensive.
Oh, okay.
Dr. Pasley is actually, I shared them all with her and then she made a board, a folder for the board. She's actually looking to share that with me right now. So it'll all be in one spot.
That's right.
Actually, in our board policy, it's not, I can't hold up on my phone. Janelle, in our folder, it's in there. Michelle and Ramona have access to it. So it's the report. So it's the reports that Becky shared in January, and then I made a copy and made a folder.
So two of the reports I shared with you in Board Update, then Board Chair Thompson and Trustee Briston wanted the, one that the admin assistants fill out, and each school fills out. So you just have, when you look at it, you have to know that admin assistants are in charge of their tab. So it doesn't, each page looks differently, but that's because the school does it, and we're not gonna micromanage the school. So I'm just telling you ahead of time, that's why it does, each tab doesn't look the same.
And then go to her details. But when we were getting stuff, we were all getting it. If it was sent to one board member, it was being sent to all of us.
I said the two, the two according to policy.
All of the spreadsheets.
On the policy committee, because of this policy, they wanted to see the bigger one.
Oh, okay.
So I, okay, that's, sorry.
I'm trying to follow this, because I know at our last meeting, Lynn had said you would share me this, and I didn't receive it.
Yeah, it was in the Board Update.
But I just went through the Board Update, so.
I shared the Board Update with her, so she saw where I shared it with you guys.
Okay, I'll send this whole folder right now to everybody.
Can't remember which Board Update it was, but I shared, shared it with her.
It was in January. I'm pretty sure it was Januaries, but I'll, I'll do this right now.
So can I answer your question, Trustee Bain? The one I shared was according to the policy that we're supposed to share annually, and I knew they were working on this, so I put it in there. And you had asked several times about this question, so I put it into that Board Update. But then there's a bigger spreadsheet that combines everything that each admin assistant fills out.
I guess I missed it in the Board Update, too. I could not, and I just scanned through it now, trying to-
I'll have, I haven't-
See where you had it put. It's sometimes with the links and stuff.
I know, it's a lot, it's-
In the Board Update?
Yeah, but she's just gonna give you all three together, so you don't have to.
So it's in, you just, you should've just received the 30-10 follow-up spreadsheet, and then all three of them are there.
So do you want me to open those, Trustee Jones, so you can see what I'm talking? Let me just show you what we're talking about. This is, this one right here. This is any out-of-district applications.
Oh, I did see it.
Yeah, and so, and then you can see all the information now. I don't wanna keep it up because it has his name and stuff, so I'm going over to the right. But it says in the Board Policy, you have to know the reason for denial in the notes and stuff. So that's this one. This is the, this is the one that each building, you see here, I'm gonna move it so we don't see names. But you can see here, each building, it looks different, but you can see who's applied, whether it was-
Okay.
And then, it's very confidential, because it says all of the information, so I'm not gonna stay on this. But you can see how it looks different at each school, and they have, that's why, it's because each admin assistant is doing it differently. So I just, I know you like consistency, but that's why. Each admin assistant is doing it their own way. And then, at the district level, and then this is the, again, let me move this so they're not looking at names. But this tells you whether it's approved or denied, and the reason why. So those three-
Does everything just summarizes the numbers by school?
You're talking about total numbers, how many are out of the district, how many are in? We do that in the fall, but we could certainly come back and do it again right now.
Well, we're not interested in individual students, obviously.
Yeah.
We're more interested in, you know, the impact of a number in a school.
Well, we can tell you how many were, have applied, and how many were denied, and how many were approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there is only two people approved to come from out-of-district that didn't have siblings in the, and, I mean, we've really cut back, as far as in this last two years.
Had siblings from a previous year?
Yeah, if siblings were in the building, yeah, we allowed them to come in, if they're siblings.
So they're out of district.
Yeah.
But we've grandfathered, because we didn't want people to have to move, but we're not letting new people in.
Okay, all right. Well, that's the key right there.
We have not, yeah. I'm telling you, there is a, one, two waivers that we've done. If my memory serves me correct, I'll double-check, but I remember only approving two out-of-district to come in.
This year.
This year, that didn't have siblings. There were exceptional cases, exceptional reasons for both of those. And there, so there was only two that we let in. There's a lot of denials up in Spirit Lake, because the, they're five, 10 minutes away from Spirit Lake Elementary. You already know this.
Long drive.
Yeah, and then they go to Priest River, and it's hours, and we get a lot of parent complaints. But to Board Chair Thompson's point, people come and they build, and then they call and say, Rebecca's fielded a lot of calls, saying, "Well, I thought, this is so close, I thought it was in your district." And we have to say, "It's not." I've got a lot of angry emails and a lot of irate people, because it's out of, I said, "It's out of our control." In other states, they get to just decide. They've gone up to that board, the board's denied. This board has had a presentation from a group that's trying to annex in Spirit Lake, some pieces of Spirit Lake cut off road. And so far, their district is denying. Our board said, "We're happy to take you if you go down and get approval." And it's, the state hasn't got through that process yet. They've made an appeal to the State Department.
That's helpful.
We could tally these numbers, though, and I could send it to the board.
Do we need to make this decision tonight, and is that most helpful?
You're, well, I, I mean, it's, what's on the agenda is this policy. It's new procedures, because we've never had the procedures before, and then the form. We've had a form, but we've made it so that it's more in alignment with the policy and the procedures. It's fillable online. So those three components all fit with the one policy. And then Policy 3080 is a crossover, a crossover of its policy that we needed to update. So if we need to table this, to table these policies, we can. It's, that's fine.
Because I, the implementation would probably next year, anyway, I hope.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
So there was 11 people out-of-district applications this year. We already have five applied for next year, but we had 11. Only three were approved. So one had a sibling, and two worthy waiver I told you about, and that's on that one sheet. So that's the only ones that were out-of-district that were approved.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry.
So it's, I'm looking at the out-of-district slash open enrollment application spreadsheet that I shared with you. If you look on that one, and it says 21, 22 at the top, there's 11 people that have applied. You can see their application if you link on that blue link. It tells you the student, their application, the phone number. If you look over in column L, there's approved. There's only three that were approved. Are you looking at the one I'm looking at?
What tab are you on?
Uh, just says 21, 22. Out-of-district slash open enrollment application spreadsheet that I just shared with you. Only 11 applied, and three were approved.
All great answers.
Um, yeah, so one, one was that a family moved out of district, but they had a connection, a really strong connection, and there is an exceptional reason that's in here for you to read. We approved that for the remainder of the year, and we said they have to move to their new district at the end of the year, but we're letting them finish the year. Then we have a border student between Post Falls and Rafterm. They moved out. They're gonna finish at Betty Kiefer, but next year they have to, they're gonna reapply, but, or depending on here, we would deny. And then we have a student that's finishing their senior year here. And we already have five applications for next year. Two. Two from Spirit Lake, one from Priest River, and two from Carywood, applications so far for next year.
Mark, count it.
Two Coeur d'Alene, two Priest River, and two Sandbanks.
And then do all those numbers include all the staff students also, or?
No, so if you look, the one that has the-
School by school.
Yeah, if you look at the zone transfer request, that, zone transfer means they're in, live in our district, they pay our taxes, they live in our district. That's the zone transfer. And if you look at the third spreadsheet, which is the out-of-district zone requests by school, that has all the staff waivers, and you can see by school. And I can certainly tally these for you. I can even do it while you go on to the next item and come back. But you can see how many staff waivers by school. Like, the first one's Athol, then there's Betty Kiefer. You can see how many are zone staff waivers. And you can see all the information there, if they're approved, denied, for each of our schools down there.
I did find one Board Update back in October of last year that you shared. When we first started this conversation, it was Trustee Bain that asked for the report.
Yeah, I just did it, because I told Lynn, I said, "Lynn, I know I did this," so I went back through every Board Update, and I found it.
Are you sure that email?
Yeah.
I have them all now. I'm, I mean, they're all there.
I can tell you right now.
I guess we initially received it from Chrissy, and I thought that Lisa had. Because we initially thought we didn't have any accepted out-of-district, and then Ms. Arnold corrected that at one of the meetings. And then Chrissy, the clerk, can share that with us, but.
Sorry. I have the email that Dr. Meyer sent me. It's on 13122 is when it was included.
Okay.
So 13122.
Is when I did the-
Board update for that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just because I gave, Trustee Bain had asked about it several times. I knew they were working on this policy. The Board Policy says to update annually. Board Chair Thompson said she thought it probably should be updated in the beginning of the year. But I hadn't done that, so I decided just to do it at mid-year, so you guys would see where we're at. But then, when they were working on this policy, Dr. Pasley said, they would like to see the full meal, full thing, Becky, not just that one. So that's when I shared all three of these. But if it would be helpful, we certainly could do, tally these to do a report. I just, whatever the board wants, as long as we know in advance, I will have that prepared.
Do we need further discussion, or do we need to table it, and put around these numbers in our heads, and then have a discussion, or?
I guess I'm still not clear as to what the difference between those two spreadsheets, between the out-of-district slash zone request, 21, 22, and the out-of-district open enrollment applications. What's the difference between these two?
If you look at the one, and Dr. Pasley, you can help me. If you look at the big one that has every, it's by every student down at the bottom. Everybody has put every single one, if it's a zone request, if it's a staff waiver, everything is, is in that one by school.
So can I, the standalone, Trustee Bain, is specific to just out-of-district? That would be an open enrollment. They're just standalone, so not attached to a staff waiver. The other one is specific to the zone. The one that has all of the students encompasses everything. So if there was an open enrollment, and for staff waivers, it could mean that it's a zone transfer. It could mean that it's an open enrollment. And so sometimes you'll see two, two marks, like it will say, "Open enrollment plus a staff waiver." It will say, "Zone transfer plus a staff waiver." So that kind of is the, that's the, you know, mother lode of all the spreadsheets, in the sense of what they're working off of. And then Rebecca will extrapolate out, if it's separate to just an open enrollment, and it's, it's a non-staff situation. Is that, is that a little bit more clear?
Maybe.
What we could certainly do is, we can have them take these spreadsheets and just do a simple, "Here's an Athol, how many people live there, how many are coming, that live in our district, coming from out of zone, and here's how many out of district or..."
That would be very helpful.
Yeah, we, we could certainly do that.
Change up the spreadsheet.
Yeah, we can do that tomorrow. That would be no problem.
Because we're not interested in individual students, and only mildly interested in the reason for it.
Yeah, well, we can-
We're interested in the number.
Yeah, we can certainly, we can absolutely do that tomorrow. Okay, and I'll just share it with you.
You know, I guess my overall thinking is, I don't have much heartburn with in-zone transfers within the district, assuming they meet the criteria necessary, you know, to go from one elementary school to another. As long as it's not creating some major impact.
Right.
I do have a lot of concern about out-of-district.
Yeah, me as well. And respectfully, even if we haven't, if we, if the district's taken it upon itself to say, "No, we're not going to," even though our policy says yes, we, we can, or we will, I think those two need to be aligned. And I would much rather have a policy that says no, and then have it brought back to us to say, "We really need to reconsider this because of X, Y, Z," than to have this point of contention with the patrons that are like-
That's precisely what has happened in the past sometimes.
Yeah, yeah.
So the only thing I guess I would ask the board to consider is maybe if there's an exception for, there are sometimes a student that maybe has bullying and harassment issue that has happened in another building, another school district. Right now, we have one this year, but that one was really important, and that was an exception. So I guess I would just, if there's any caveat for having, looking at an exceptional case that would be better in our district.
What the policy committee did do on both policies, which I have, I have, I just haven't clicked off. And it was even in our policy 3005, is, it says, "The Board of Trustees shall consider the needs of the student requesting the transfer." Throughout the entire policy, there's supposed to be some connection with all these transfers in the board. And in the past, there hasn't been, with the exception of last year, when we were like, "What is going on?" And then there's a few other components within the policy that the board is supposed to be involved in this. And the board never has. And so we, as a board, need to decide, how involved are we going to be? So that we make sure the policy is in alignment with our expectations and obligations, instead of just adopting something that says, "We're supposed to be doing something that we're not doing." Or adopting something that says, you know, "We're not going to be doing that," and then upholding that, that we're not involved with it. Because the district does have a pretty stringent workthrough when a kid wants to transfer, or be moved in or whatnot. They do a great job with all of that. And by the way they, their methodology of doing it, I don't know necessarily that the board needs to be involved with it. But the old policy said we were, and we haven't been, so I just wanna bring that into an alignment.
Well, and I don't know, you know, what's happened, you know, in the recent past. It's not atypical for, you know, administration to handle all of that up to the point of where, you know, at the beginning of the school year, maybe the board is presented with a list of those students who are being recommended for either transfer or out-of-district admission. And then the board approves that. I don't know if that's been practiced or not.
Not since I've been here. It is a huge deal, though. We come in here, and we have all this whiteboard filled, we have to talk about, and then where there's room. And it's, it's a big, long, teams are here till quite off late at night, doing, making sure we get everybody in the right spot.
And it's a struggle. I, you know, I can remember that it's, it's a struggle to make a decision on someone.
Yes.
I just don't like having a policy that says, "We're supposed to be doing something that we're not doing." And I also don't want to take on something that we don't need to do, because they have an adequate system that is very rigorous and thorough. However, if we're supposed to be checked, yeah, they do, they have to align, they have to align. And if it's just a simple check-in with saying, "Here is what we've done this year," then we need to start doing that. So I just want it ultimately. So with that being said, do we want to move forward on this, or do we want to table it, so that we can keep going?
What was the last motion that we made?
We made no motion on this.
There's no motion that has been made for this.
Uh, okay, not on this one?
No, not on this. I opened it up, wait. Before we take any action on anything, we need to talk.
It was a table on the other issue.
Okay. Well, to me, it sounded like we need more discussion, and we need more number, we don't have enough information to make a- Well, to me it sounded like we need more discussion and we need more number, we don't have enough information to make a decision. So I would move that we table it until another meeting, a second.
Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to policy 3080. This is non-resident student attendance policy. I did not attend for this, so trustee Grissom, can you? Because, I'm sorry, I had to step out.
Where's the 3010P and F and?
I thought we were tabling all of them.
Oh, all of that?
Because they all go together.
Those two hundred.
The supplemental resources were for consideration?
What?
Never mind. I, nope, I accept the same.
Not a burden, but the 3010P is the procedures for that.
Yes, yeah.
I'm trying to catch that maybe I'll go over there.
Okay, which one were you asking me about? Sorry about that.
Number is 3080, that policy.
Oh, that was the one, that was the non-resident.
Right.
So basically, all we did through this was go back through and make it mirror the other 3010s. Because this is the other piece of the 3010, other than it being non-resident. And by statute, non-resident means out of state or out of district. So, because there was a lot of redundancy between all of these reforms, the policies. So we narrowed the 3080 and changed some of the language just to make sure it's like non-resident. And all the stricken languages because it lives in the 3010.
We wanted to match what the state, so we had named it out of state and that's what it, but then we look on the statute, it's specific to non-resident. And so that encompasses everything. So we went through and changed everything to non-resident, so it didn't say out of state.
Okay.
Which is our original did say that.
Right.
But we wanted to match.
So we need to table this one as well because we're tabling the other one and this is all related and it, this one references and refers to the other one? Does this one?
It could be for better understanding, but it does not because it explicitly addresses a non-resident according to statute. So it puts a lot of the statute language in there. It would probably be best if we do do that in case we come across something in 3010. Then we'll have to go back and update 3080. So it would probably be better since they're all related, ones are cross-reference to the other.
They're all a series to each other.
Yeah. So yes.
I would move to, to table this one to be addressed at the same time as with 3010, the series.
Hearing a motion, none, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We have a whole.
But what's the significance of the color coding?
Well. What we typically do is we have our policy and then we'll bring in one policy from ISBA.
Which is which color?
Okay, I see what you're saying. I believe that's right.
We need a key, like we need her, the attendance stuff.
Well, we kind of went off.
So red is ISBA.
Okay.
Black is what exists in both.
Right.
And so that, but if there was something that we originally had in our policy that was adopted or revised on, you know, I'm going off of 2007 because that's when some of them have been revised, that would be blue. So again, red is new, specific to ISBA, black is universal to both policies. And then blue is what we had. So sometimes it's a little bit more detailed, specific to a procedural piece or that kind of a thing. And then if Board Chair Thompson or trustee Grissom made a comment or a strike through or added new language, we typically just highlight that in yellow to denote this is just a new. So we could put a policy, but it was, I mean, this has been hard and just working through, because I think we've done enough for like six weeks maybe. Just how do you delineate all that and still represent it? Because, I mean, you know, you're, we're getting it from multiple sources. So we could definitely put a key, I don't know if we put it on each policy or we, somewhere there's a qualifier. But that's how we're trying to do it so that, again, all red is brand new, all blue is existing and black's universal. And yellow, it's not the, it's not the wording. It's a, you know, it's the series, the box or whatever. So it's bright and big and you know that that's our language from the policy committee.
On top of the fact.
As we know.
On top of the fact that what I did in 3010 was just highlight where it was saying the board has to do something specific. And it's like, well, we're not. So we need to know about that and decide if we want to keep that language in the policy.
And the strikeout is obvious, so we appreciate that.
And we have bounced back and forth. Yes, we have. We give all these nice powers and strikeouts and then.
She does have a key on your working document, but they don't see that. So she does, she did have a key. It's just not in the spot where you're.
So didn't we vote on that 3080 table?
Uh, yep.
Yep.
I just want to make sure we voted. Okay. Moving on to the audit services, we have a request form from CFO Wallace. I have to start saying Mr. Wallace CFO. He's requesting us decide if we want to hire Hayden Ross for one year or three years. He presented us with the price on one year and the three year. And it does state that on the three-year engagement, basically provides an additional $700 a year discount over the single year fee. So.
What's the current year cost?
It was real similar, about $21,000.
Twenty-one?
Yeah, I think I had that in the audit. I had the actual, if you go down. So it was, and it was that one, right now he's going 22, we were around 21.5 or right around there, about a 700 increase.
I would move approval of the three-year contract related motion.
No, second, there. Hearing a motion, none, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
We have a conflict with our June board meeting date. It's scheduled for Wednesday, the eighth, which happens to be Lakeland's graduation. So we need to officially move that date so that we can attend the graduation. Okay? So I'd like to know.
I would prefer to move it later so we can talk about graduation or, you know.
And also for your annual budget hearing, it has to be June eighth and after because of the laws that CFO Wallace has to meet. So is the following week work or June 15th? CFO Wallace? I believe the graduations, graduation days are the eighth, for Lakeland, the tenth for Timberlake. And I thought the.
Third.
Third for Mountain View. Okay. So if we bumped it to the following week, made it the third week of the 15th, would that work for everyone?
Yep.
So then I would entertain a motion to move the June eighth board meeting to June 15th. No, second. Hearing a motion, none, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to our last action item, which is the Reach Academy.
Well, the corrected is Board Chair Thompson, when she reviewed the initial Reach cost analysis. I do think it warrants further discussion from CFO Wallace is better able to describe it. Because it's not just a numbers. He can describe it better than I can. But the corrected piece that just got out of before the meeting is because Board Chair Thompson reviewed the worksheet that I had sent to you folks in the board update. And I had included the entire benefits for the stipend, for the admin position for Reach. And Board Chair Thompson said, what? I thought maybe there was a formula and I didn't check it well enough. So she caught that and then I went back and talked to CFO Wallace and that's why the correct is there. So it's just the top line that's corrected on that spreadsheet. But I, I would like if, if the board would entertain hearing from CFO Wallace. Because it's not just a numbers game. It, it's not just the numbers. There's staffing and whether the students stay enrolled. There's other considerations. He also wanted to point out that there's, we're not charging for the facility. Like there's different things that aren't in this full picture. If you wouldn't mind.
Okay, Liz. I don't know the corrected. You don't have the corrected?
No.
I'll watch you refresh. But before you get started, I would just like to thank Ms. Runyon for the incredible video that you provided with your kiddos and their athletes. I thought it was great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hannah saw a silly string, I think today on Instagram, she, silly string, oh.
I'll do almost anything.
Do you want me to bring this up to the screen? Yeah, I found it. I got it. I just wouldn't like logged in for some reason. It didn't pop up. Thanks there. Thank you.
So, Chair Thompson, members of the board. So when I look at this, you know, I, this was a pretty quick, I just looked for the expenditure side, really direct expenditures. So who, whether the staff that are associated with Reach and then of some of the technology that I knew that we bought for Reach and the building budget that was assigned for Reach. When you look at total costs of what it is, I mean, that's, that's sort of a direct cost, but it's not having all the costs associated with running the district. So each Reach student would have a part of our internet service cost. Each Reach student have part of our sort of, for our plumbing cost. And so all those costs that are not directly charged to Reach but are part of running the district, every student sort of has a piece of that cost. I didn't include that because that just gets way too in the weeds. So you, you have to just to remember that there's direct costs and indirect costs. And I didn't really include all those indirects and all that because it gets messy. The other thing on the revenue side, you're saying, well, you know, that's a quick like look saying, well, here's the total salary, benefit and discretionary we had. That's how much we were getting per student. There's X amount of students or, you know, I convert to units and it's a way to generate a, a number from a portion. And that's probably fairly accurate. But really, when you start looking at these numbers, and this is just from a pure, you know, efficacy of the program or anything, that how you really would look at this on whether you would save any money or not, is how many students could we serve in our current buildings and not have to add staff? So if I could take all the Reach kids and they could go in there and it's the exact same staff, and I don't know if that's the case, you could hit a bubble, you're hiring a new teacher and things. But let's say we could do this and not have the Reach staff, well, then you're, you're saving money. But if you're still going to have those kids and all that staff is going to sort of transition over, then in the big picture, it's sort of a push, money-wise. Does that make sense? So if you still sort of have the same kids and the same amount of total staff in the district, it's sort of a wash. If you lost a bunch of students, let's say all 80 students lost, left and you still cut the staff, then that would be a negative. I, I mean, so that's a lot of supposals and things like that. That's, just when you start talking about that from just a numbers point of view. That's really how you sort of look at that. That's all. So. You know, I think as a general rule, probably with this program, I don't know, you know, I think a lot of the students might stay with the district and, and, you know, we definitely probably maintain the staff, so. I don't know. You know, I, those are the things that you'd really want to consider if you, if it was just the fiscal impact of what you're considering.
Okay. On your expenditure, you have a building budget. What is that 8620 include?
So that's just sort of the supply budget for Reach and really the discretion of Ms. Dunbar. And they've been buying, you know, supplies for the kids.
Vladimir, describe the students who attend this program.
Would, would I be able to let Mrs.?
Not individually, just characterize.
Characterize it. Yeah, could you speak to that?
I'm going to come stand up here. I do have one of my parents here too, if it was a question that you wanted to refer to them. So originally I would say, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Can you introduce yourself just so the people watching knows?
I am Leslie Dunbar Runyon. I've been known as Mrs. Dunbar and Ms. Runyon. And so that's who I am. Taught in this district for 16 years, so I've been around for a while, so I just want you to know that. So originally, when I came on to the job, I would say the students were half and half. Parents that were concerned about COVID and parents that just didn't like the traditional schooling. So we have adjusted and shifted and we've had a lot of influx of students in and out. Right now, I would say we're very, very heavy in the middle school area. Parents that are not thrilled with what's happening in the brick and mortar buildings and wanted a little more freedom on how their students learn. And so we've shifted a little bit more into the three through eighth grade over starting very balanced. So and we have gained, I think we started the year, our numbers were quite low, around 50, and now we're closing in on 80 students. So they're all a little different. My three through five probably are very much typical students with parents that are sitting with them, doing the work. My older grades are a lot of kids that are babysitting at the same time they're trying to do their work and have other responsibilities. I have some young ladies that already have jobs and so they're trying to do school and then get to their jobs. So it's an interesting crew.
So did the program originally begin because of COVID?
Yes. So when we went into.
The question then becomes, are we kind of beyond that home?
Well, I just want to say one thing back to that. We built the airplane in flight and I, I really was proud. Patty Morrison was leading the charge at that point and I really was proud of what we did. Because we had, all of a sudden, we just went to, we're going to start. IDLA, Idaho Digital Learning Academy, does have a K through 12 that's available for families that is supplanted by the legislature every year. So it costs $60 for a credit for students and we get the, the enrollment funding. It used to be ADA, but we get the enrollment funding. But at that point, there were parents that were, did not feel comfortable with that. So we created this program and we have K through eight here at Reach. And at that point, it was Lakeland Online Academy. And so that, they built the airplane while it was in flight and then at the high school, at Mountain View High School, they use pro, an online, different online program. And they have online at Mountain View. And this program had nearly 500 students in it, K-12, the first year that it was in effect. But a lot of students have gone back into the, the in-person learning because, you know, in-person learning has a lot of benefits to it. So the only thing I do want to tell the board is there is other options besides this now. There is the IDLA, Cordelane. One thing I fear, we have students that are from out of district. Cordelane is starting an online academy next year, so we could lose students over to online. Or if the board decides not to continue, that's an option for those families as well, or the IDLA.
So is mostly your programming virtual?
So it's hybrid. So yes, we do have, it's basically four days online, which is live instruction with the kids interacting with their classroom teacher. And one day in person at, we called the hub. I don't know what it was called before that. We were just, we have and probably you saw on the, we have added a instructional para because we were noticing that a lot of our middle schoolers were not doing well academically. So we've added a para. Dr. Meyer allowed us to add a para. And so she is supporting kids in person on two of their online days because they weren't getting the parent support that unfortunately these kids need. So if Reach doesn't continue, the district may want to look at some other things, especially for that middle school crew. Because it is a group of students that don't typically fit in to the standard building that we have in our district. And they have some interesting needs.
And in the last board update, I did give a preview. And in the last board update, I did give a preview to you about a work group that's been working with Mrs. Arnold about a possibility to help support those middle-level students to what Mrs. Dunbar Runyon is talking about.
Yeah. That's a little bit where I was going.
Yeah.
And I would strongly recommend something. And even if our program was to continue, I would ask for some additional things in the sense because of that support for those middle school kids, especially for maybe counseling, a counselor kind of more available for us. So.
Do you feel, since you're gaining students, do you feel if the community had a better understanding of how the program worked, that it might continue to grow? Do you think the need is actually out there? Or do you feel that this is just a handful that's left from coming out of COVID?
So again, it's really a big mix. The new students are all not, there's no COVID. But we do have, I've already heard from maybe three of my three through five that are already wanting to go back, and they're actually fearful that they're not going to have a spot in their, in their zone school. So I've been trying to reassure them that they're a zoned kiddo in a school. So, but the middle school, no. They, a lot of my eighth graders are very fearful having to go back to, because they can't just transfer into Mountain View. There has to, there's a process, I understand, I'm talking to the principal. And so they're fearful that they're going to have to go back to ninth grade in a building because they've already determined that that's not the place for them.
Your students come to you based solely on parent request or by referral from the school that they previously attended?
Both. So, for example, we're picking up two new, three, actually, three new students on Monday that are coming from Lakeland Junior High or Lakeland Middle School. And that was a, working with their principal and their counselor, thought that our program was a better suited for their needs. And so at the beginning of the year, it was all parent. Now it seems to be it's a school, it's a team kind of decision.
Yeah, that's pretty typical.
And then Mrs. Dunbar Runyon did provide a staff plan. So you can see she met with each of the staff and asked them if it was going to stay or not stay, what would, what their plans would be. You can look at that spreadsheet. It tells you what they would be planning on doing next year. So thank you for doing that. That's helpful for the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we have any discussion of the Reach program that we offer?
And not to be obvious, but the reason that I asked that it was on the agenda now was because Mrs. Dunbar Runyon would like to be able to talk to her staff. We're getting ready to do staffing. This is the time of year where we really start looking at that and what our numbers are. And staff can put in for transfers and all sorts of things. So she wants to be really fair to her staff. Also, the reason is Mrs. Arnold and her team really does want to be able to talk with the board about thoughts for an at-risk alternative slash alternative middle-level program that they have done a lot of brainstorming about, that they'd like to address some of the needs that Mrs. Dunbar Runyon talked about. And also to parents to be able to know if the program's going to be in place or not be in place, that they start looking at alternatives. So it is, it's time sensitive, and that's why we asked that it be discussed.
I understand that. Can you give us any numbers on grade distribution, student numbers, please, for grade level?
Yes. It's on the thing that I just brought up that.
I have it open at the financial.
Yeah, can you?
Yeah, it's on my enrollment.
Yeah.
It was the financial presentation.
Were you asking for like per numbers, per grade level?
Yeah, it's on the.
Is it on there?
Yeah, I just had it open, but I must have shut it. So go ahead.
It just shows the grades. So right now, in kindergarten three, first grade four, second grade four, third grade 11, fourth grade nine, fifth grade six, sixth grade 13, seventh grade 14, and eighth grade 11. For a total of 70.
Almost half are middle schoolers.
Right here, you can probably, I don't know if you can see that.
So our grade bands pretty much go 11, 28, and now we're closing in on 38 for that six through eight.
It's these bottom numbers, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's hard to see, but.
Is that you?
No, no, Bob, you go ahead.
Bren, the three and a half units that you estimated here, that's the normal unit capacity. It's not the, it's not the 12 or 18 that we would get at the alternative school.
No. Yeah, I'd be normal. Yeah, because they're not considered alternative schools.
See, so that's one difference.
Yeah.
I noticed that change. Is that going to be the number next year, 18 rather than 12? I saw that on something.
No, it's still 12 for at-risk funding. But you can all, they changed the law two years back. You can go now six, at-risk funding from sixth grade on up now.
Yeah, but it still has to be in an individual building and some of those rules that we have Mountain View separate. So yeah, so 12, yeah, the ratios have, they really haven't changed the funding formula. Yeah, the only thing they've changed now is using enrollment number instead of ADA. But if you think about that, if that stays for a little while, that's like a 5% increase in funding because, you know, traditionally, we're about 95%.
Right.
So.
But you know, in context.
Well, I personally think it's a successful program, given where we were at. And I know that the numbers have dropped down from COVID, but I think it's great that we have the opportunity to offer something more than just brick and mortar to kids. When I was asked to put this on, it was because it was, it was not cost neutral. But when I look at the numbers, I see that from my perspective of what I'm being presented, I think it is cost neutral. If not, we are making a little bit dollars when you're not adding in the snow plowing, which where they're at, I mean, there's also the food service. So then do you split that in half? I mean, we could get down into bend and gritty. I don't think it's beneficial, though, of all the dollars and how we allocate them to each person. I mean, I would like to remind the board that, you know, how this came to be was pretty significant. And just to, after one year, decide that, you know, we don't want to do it anymore. I don't know if we've given the program. It's due diligence to see whether or not we can succeed. Because I think it is succeeding. Maybe not at a, as large as we were presented with in the beginning, but there were transitions before it even started. So that's my opinion. So it looks to me like one of the staff members does not intend to come back to Reach next year. What is the difficulty of hiring a teacher for Reach compared to?
And, and, yeah, and just one other thing. If you look at line three and four, it says, yes, but only if teaching two grades. And that means that we would have to, if they're only going to teach at Reach with two grades, that means we'd have to add additional staffing. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure.
Because right now, if you look at the, if you look at the grades they are teaching, she'll tell you the grade distribution, but the, with these numbers and the staff ratio, it's a little skewed to the upper level. And I just want the board to have all the information before we make a decision.
So presently, my teachers are teaching three grade bands. So kindergarten through second, third through fifth, and sixth through eighth. They're all struggling, I will say. They, they are working every day, you know, way more than they're getting paid for. So one of the teachers has a specialty in another subject area, and that's where she wants to go back to because she pulled out because of COVID. And so she wants to get back into her specialty area, and that's the one that's on there. The other two are just, and in my opinion, it's too much for them. So we would either have to, because you notice our kindergarten numbers are quite low. And in my opinion, kindergarten is very hands-on and needs that interactive. Maybe that's not a Reach student because we do want to, because community learning is kind of our mission. So maybe kindergarten possibly first. So we could shorten our grade bands and have two grades, or we could add additional staff if that was needed. So just, yeah, I think someone asked about the actual hiring. Funny thing, I've already been approached by two different teachers that actually have a technology degree that that's where they went into, that were, would be interested in working from Reach because they like that, that virtual world, I guess you'd call it. So that's kind of some things that I don't think it would be difficult to hire someone. Maybe some principal might be upset at me if I took them away from them, but, you know, that's their choice if there was an open position and they chose to hire. But you can see that there are some options that we could do. That sixth through eighth grade, just because of the need of the students and their uniqueness that they all have, that is some area that now we're so very heavy on, that we would definitely have to figure out to get the support with that group of kids because that's where the need is. And that's how I work, is I like to give support to where the need is. So our elementary does, our primary is very strong. And in my opinion, like I said, they probably should be in the building with a teacher away from their moms because that's that break point where sometimes we need to separate and get that hands-on learning, even though they're very successful. If they look at our data, it's actually quite high in those lower grades, but that's a way we could adjust if we need to.
So are you saying that one of the teachers would do two, three, and one would do four, five?
That, that could be a suggestion, yes, if that was a possibility.
Well, it sounds like it's becoming, or at least the idea, the teachers within the district, if they see students that might benefit from the program, it sounds like now that maybe they became aware of that, that the students could transition over.
You're right. And we have a pretty good, we have a pretty good process that we created, Dr. Pansley and I worked on. So, and we presented to the principals so they, they know kind of the expectations that we have and the limitations. We do have limitations, I will say. I mean, I can't offer PE. We do electives, but it's student-selected electives in the middle school. And obviously, music comes within the daily practice, but those are some things that we can't offer. And so we have pretty good discussions with parents before they make the choice. They also have to have good internet. We have provided hotspots. I think that was on the budget because we have provide, had to provide that for some students. And so those are some things that we've kind of fine-tuned throughout the year. We didn't have it at the beginning because, of course, I was kind of hired late on, and now we're getting pretty good at, actually. It's so much, I know. It is so much.
No, I'm curious. With the program, like Chair Thompson was saying, the push to have the program, the push in the community, you know, as far as media, newspaper, the discussions with the board to, I'm with her to just sort of, after one year, I'm really curious as to what the program could do, especially if the teachers and those within the district start seeing it as a resource and if more parents are aware of its, of its existence. I do hear you, though, with teaching three grades, that's a lot to carry, especially when you have students with needs. That's too much, I think, in my opinion, what that's worth.
There's to be over there.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm still curious. I'm wondering if it could be, you know, we pilot everything else. This never had a chance to have a pilot. I'm wondering if more thought process goes into what it actually looks like and, you know, a cap maybe of students just to sort of see? I mean, I don't know, you know, especially if we have more students in the district that could benefit from it. And I am concerned about the students that don't fit in the building. You know, what, what do we do with that, you know? And, and, you know, I know there are other alternatives out there, but there's a reason they're not using those alternatives.
And I will say, we did have IDLA. We did meet with them just because we didn't know anything about it. I knew it's been around for a while, and I didn't know much about it. So we actually met with the reps so they could kind of talk us through. And we're pretty transparent with parents when they call, because there are some that just want to have their kids signed up for something and not attend. I've been pretty much holding them very accountable for coming because we can't help them if they're not around. And so, but we do show them what the IDLA option is, if that's more of the freedom they want. Because a few parents travel and they wanted a little more freedom with that kind of a thing where they could work their own schedule. So we have actually guided some students to that process if that was the best choice for them.
What's your personal feeling about the program?
You know, I could see it going both ways. I would like to live out the mission. This year, we still are under kind of the little bit of the COVID restriction in the sense that we've done a few things out in the community. We've had some, you know, partnerships, but we haven't done what the mission has, you know, says that we're going to do. And so I would like to see a little more learning. For example, like mining, that, you know, I'd love for my kids to actually get that opportunity to take what we've learned in school and actually go utilize it. So we have some really great parents. At this point, we haven't accessed any of the transportation. Our parents have been transporting our kids. So in a day that they're not in the hub, we can actually take them to the field, not the field, but you know, go run in the field. But we can take them out and let them take part in the activity, and the parents have been transporting. So we actually haven't even utilized any of our field trip funds just because this year, we just have that group of parents that are willing to transport.
Would you like to add anything to the conversation since you come from a different perspective?
Well, yeah, just basically, my daughter's.
He got it told.
Yeah. Kathy Erickson, my daughter's Holly, and she's a fourth grader. Nice to see you again. She went to Big Betty Kiefer. Yeah, we came into the system mainly because of COVID, but we found it was a wonderful niche for our daughter. She's a little bit slower on the uptake. When she gets it, she runs like a banshee, but it takes her a bit to process. And what was nice about being online and being at home, all those distractions of kids running around in the room, poof, disappeared. So now she could start absorbing like that sponge and bringing everything in, and her learning ability just went crazy. Instead of going in person last year, I was concerned we'd have to get back online again from the year before, so I kept her online. I didn't want her going back and forth, back and forth because she needed that stability. Fortunately, we got to stay in school. Yay. But we also found because of that pitch, she did better. So I was very excited for this program. The only thing I can tell you differently about the two is our teachers are overworked. They're not giving, I don't see my daughter excelling as well this year as she did last year. She was very behind because of COVID, and we lost those last few months of school. She was very far behind in math. I'm ready, I'm excited for I-ready. And she, um. And Dr. Windich, or Dr. Windich, I'm sorry, Mrs. Windich was amazing. She only had one grade. She was able to spend all of this, all of this time. Her class was bigger because she didn't have them all in the room with her. She could individualize. Some kids needed more time, some kids didn't. This one is, my daughter doesn't get much teacher time. And that's where I see her lack. She doesn't have a teacher available to her when she needs it. She gets as much time as can be allotted, given the circumstances of how the grades are now set up. So if we could have a little bit more of a support system, the one teacher to two grades, a para there when a little extra help is needed, that would be great. That, that would be where I could see. Maybe a different building than the hub, where they could get outside and play and be kids and that kind of stuff on their social day. But I think the program is a success. And I, I would love for her to stay in this program. I'm with those other parents out there that I'm not sure I would let her go back into a building, not because I'm afraid of a disease or anything like that, I never was, but because the program fits my child really well in what she needs to do to succeed in life. And that would be the only reason. But this year has been a struggle.
And we've talked about that. And that's kind of what, why my teachers are all feeling that it's too much for three grades, even though our numbers were low. But again, we didn't know where, we, we had 10 kindergarten at the beginning. And those parents realized, oh, we can't do this at home. So it's just has adjusted. And now we see where that need is more than we saw, obviously, at the beginning, so.
Given a little bit more resources, this program's going to be very successful. And yes, once the word gets out, you're not only going to have to hire, have a teacher for two select grades, you're going to have to have more than one teacher for more than two grades because you're going to have two teachers for two second and third grade classes because that's what's going to happen. Because this program is going to be successful. And, and there's, there is a group of kids out there that, closet kids, you know, they just, they're, they're a little bit on the introvert side. Not that they're not social, they're just a little bit more on the introvert side.
They're highly sensitive persons.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, mine cried the drop of a penny because she's just so sensitive. And she would always, in classrooms, she'd always step back. She, you know, she'd go to get help. The more aggressive child, and I don't mean aggressive like that, but, you know, the more pushy little child would get in and say, hey, I need help. And my daughter would just step back, so then she wouldn't get the help she needed. So this way, the teacher, they raise their hand differently on a computer so they don't get forgotten about. The teacher sees them, they're right there in front of them, and they can see them. So it's a great program, it really is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I do know that we have students in our district that are enrolled in other districts in Idaho using the other districts' online schools to teach their children. Because Lakeland didn't have that option. And they did want their students in, you know, that type of an atmosphere. You know, they all transition, I don't know that. But I do know that that does exist in our, in our district.
If we look at, if we were doing, taking off KN1, and you're just looking at two, three, would be 16 kids. And four, five would be 15 kids. And then looking if the, if there was a different alternative for the middle-level program. And that's obviously lower than our average class sizes in the, in the district. And there's additional staffing. So I, I do believe, if we're going just from a financial piece, is there would have to be some parameters because there's an admin assistant, there's a stipend for an admin, and then two, you know, two teachers if we did that. And coming up with a number to run the program, we need these many students. To add a teacher, we need to get to this many students. If we're looking at it purely from a financial standpoint, there's more discussion about that. I think that's pertinent for the bigger picture.
So are you saying not offer this middle-level through reach anymore? Oh, okay.
Yeah, definitely not.
Oh, not?
I think, yeah, that's what the principal is, had discussions. And that's what Mrs. Arnold was going to, been working with that group. And that's, I think, what Mrs. Dunbar Ryan was alluding to earlier about this needs of the middle-level program are really not aligned with the reach, more of what, and she's talked a little bit to Mrs. Arnold, and what their work, their work team is working on for proposal to reach, reach the needs of those kids where they're not going back into in-person learning in the brick-and-mortar schools. But there's an alternative school program that helps be a hybrid model. But, and I'm taking away the thunder, but a hybrid model that really is funded at the ad-risk level and it also meets the needs of those kids to what Mrs. Dunbar Ryan was talking about.
So we're talking, so you're both, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. So you're both saying that we would remove, if reach progressed forward, that it would remove the middle-level students? Is that how, what you were understanding also, or?
That's not what I am saying, but that was a recommendation.
Okay.
That there, this is a need that I can see probably is true with that group of students. That they need more support.
Because when you were talking, saying that it could continue in the current framework without additional support. And that's really what.
I understand, yes.
What she was saying, and that's what the program that, some of our brainstorming that they've come up with to meet the needs of those middle-level students.
So have we narrowed the scope down to two through five?
So, Mrs. Dunbar Ryan, she.
Sorry, I'm counting my fingers over here. It, it sounds like that, yes?
Well, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. Earlier, when you said, if the, if these, I'm just going off of what the teachers are saying. So if the teachers are saying that they only want two grade levels, there's two teachers here that are willing to stay and that they only can do two grade levels, then if we're looking at the, she was saying kindergarten and possibly first aren't conducive. The fact of Mrs. Arnold's the first-grade teacher and kindergarten first, she doesn't believe that this is appropriate learning environment. And I would think that you were, it's too difficult for what they need to do for teaching reading. So I think what I heard you say is not, is looking at the two through five? The two, the two grades, the two and three and four and five?
Yes.
And then if the middle level, it would need to look different if the middle level continued?
However, I mean, if you did the class sizes of the three, four band, a four, three band, or a three, four band, a five, six band, and a seven, eight band, you have great class sizes. You've got 26 for seven, eight. You've got 19 for five, six. You've got 21 for three, four. That's adequate class size for, and to support a teacher. So, I mean, I, I would see that that.
Yeah, the, that would be a discussion with, with her, the five, six. The six is in middle level and the five is in elementary. There's different curriculums, so that would be, I think, difficult for a teacher. But I don't know, what do you?
That would be, if we were to stay with all the grade bands, that would have to be how we would do it. Even though the grading would be very difficult, but it's better than teaching three grades in the middle school style.
How, how do you think the five, six would work together? The curriculum is the difficulty. I just don't see the point in dismantling that program to create another program when we already have this. And if teachers feel like they're, they can move the students over here. I get the idea about the building, but I don't think we have it. I think it's just a big discussion. And once again, I don't know that we have all the pieces. And obviously, if Mrs. Arnold's got something that she's got that we don't even have that to consider, I, I just think we have a lot of, I don't, I, I can't personally make a decision without all the pieces on, on this. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think there's still a lot of questions into it. And there again, here we are, we're at the end of the year, so I know that time is of the essence. So why, why is it that what Mrs. Arnold, obviously, has been proposed, or you guys have talked about it, didn't fit into reach?
It could, go ahead.
We can make this look whatever way the board wants us to make this look. We've kind of held back a little bit because we just weren't sure what the board wanted to do with reach. And, and to your point, we didn't want to replace, take one program, replace it with another if that wasn't, the need wasn't there. The one thing that, from the middle level, that I would, that I think we need to consider is the, the learning that's happening. And that these are kids who struggled in the brick-and-mortar, regular, traditional, middle school system, the majority of them. And they're continuing to struggle in the online environment also. They're, these kids are not showing as much growth. Correct me if I'm not speaking properly.
Now, if you look at the data that we gave you.
The I-ready data kind of shows that they're not, they're just not growing like the second, third, and fourth kiddos are. So is there a way to maximize what they offer with reach? And maybe build on the hybrid where they're only meeting with their kids one day a week? Our middle-level kids need, in addition to just regular academics, they need to learn some executive functioning skills, how to organize themselves, the seven habits of highly effective teams. And when you work in an alternative setting, you have some flexibility to be able to provide some of that instruction in addition to the content instruction. So we can do a hybrid where they do some online work with their online teacher and then, but have more of an opportunity to meet with somebody in person in a smaller group setting where we're compacting the curriculum a little bit so they're not having to. The other struggle, especially right now with the teacher teaching sixth, seventh, and eighth, is that there are six subjects at each of those grade levels. I don't know how you do, do that in one, in a, in a day and actually be in front of kids teaching. So how do we solve that so that they actually get direct instruction in, in the subjects that they need? So we just have kind of been brainstorming what that could look like.
So you, I mean, how do we know that the impact on the students' learning isn't because the teachers are so overloaded?
We don't.
Just like, you know, so we really don't know that that actual approach is a need. And what I'm hearing is I don't like the alternative language because we are sort of now throwing these students in this alternative pile. And we don't know that, I don't know. I, I, I would like to see the reach sort of, I agree with the kindergarten through probably second grade just because of all of the foundation learning that happens third through eighth. I could see possibly being even more, more effective and more successful. Either way, it sounds like you would, you're still talking staff and everything else that goes along with teaching students, but.
It definitely is challenging to teach that many grade levels at the middle level.
Yeah.
Yeah, you would definitely have to be down to two. And I agree that it needs to be seventh, eighth. That's why I said if you went to third, you could do a three, four, five, six, and then the seven, eight. Even though sixth grade's middle school, but it's.
Yeah, five and six has a very different curriculum between the two.
And there's a big, yeah. With the seventh and eighth, you could put kids together because the ELA standards for seventh grade are exactly the same as they are in eighth grade. You just use different texts to, to work on those for the different grade levels. Fifth and sixth grade, they're similar. Quite as closely aligned as the sixth grade are to the seventh grade. And then math is, well, if we do I-ready, that, I mean, they would be taught separately. The social studies and science standards are very different for the, the fifth and sixth because the fifth is part of that K-five grade band where the standards for the middle level are written sixth, seventh, and eighth. And it doesn't matter in what grade level you teach them, as long as they're taught in that band. So, and they're very different than what's at the elementary level. So it would make it just, it would cause a little bit more separation, I guess, as far as, I mean, this is my sixth grade time, this is my fifth grade time, where you could overlap some of that at the seventh and eighth grade.
What time of year do you do the survey with parents, asking if they're, what their plans are for next year?
Well, that was to come, if, whenever the board needed or wanted.
So it's, it's still upcoming, or you do that?
Well, yeah, because I didn't want to, like, put it out there if the board was choosing to disband reach. So I kind of was waiting and to know what.
Do you have a sense about that?
About?
How many parents would be return, families would be returning or not?
Well, we have to, it would depend on the enrollment, the out-of-district enrollment, because we do have some that are from out-of-district. I know probably say 10 will be going back to brick-and-mortar.
And then how many do you think are from Fortale?
Uh, there's two.
Because they're going to start their own.
Yes.
Online program this is next year, so two and.
That's 12.
And then we have, the eighth graders, obviously, are moving on.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you input, Trustee Jones?
I, I would prefer not to, I think, break things off. I would prefer not to make a decision without hearing the full scope of what's being suggested for the middle-levels kids.
I agree.
You know, if, if we were headed in the direction of two through five, you know, I could probably go there. But my, and the reason I say that is because I think it's already been discussed about kindergarten, first grade kids don't really need the contact time and the structured learning that takes place in a personal setting. Having been a junior high school principal for 10 years, I have some respect for the needs of middle school kids. And I, and I think what I, we're going to hear is how to, you know, how to cope with those needs for kids who find it difficult in a regular school setting, much the same as happens with high school kids. You know, this, the program we have here, in essence, was an alternative to the regular school setting. And so depending on what we, you know, what we hear about that, it may actually improve upon that for those kids and the needs that they have. I'm hoping.
So I guess my motion would be to table this topic for another meeting. And we'll gather all the evidence and for presentation would be my motion. Okay? Is there a second?
A second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and the motion carries. That moves on to discussion items. I need some notes of things we do need to kind of go over within the discussions. I know the bleachers are listed there. But given.
But given the amount of tabling we've done tonight, I think it merits a discussion of having another board meeting either next week, because I don't want to bump this to April because then the act board meeting becomes beyond longer than we already are. And I think the information we have requested can be provided to us by next week and we can resolve these issues and, I'm sorry, what does any thought?
No. It would be unsuccessful. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Week from tonight, or is that what you're thinking?
Well, I, I. Any night next week, it doesn't have to be tonight, just, well, today's, today's Wednesday.
Tuesday night.
Okay.
Today's Wednesday.
Okay.
Next Wednesday.
So either, so you said you're tied up Tuesday? Is that correct? Okay.
Why are we doing it next week and not when we would do, when we would have done the typical second, maybe?
The 23rd?
Oh, the 23rd.
I'm game for whatever. I just think that we should not be bumping this into April.
No, I agree with that. I'm, I'm just saying it's, it's more, yeah, I'd rather give everybody the time needed to pull that information together rather than feeling rushed and throw it together and, and not have, what?
Fair enough.
Given it the, that's on, and then.
Okay, so you are suggesting the 23rd?
Yes. March, not March, not May.
You know, working on, being more slicker.
Yep.
That's what?
That's what we did.
Two Wednesday.
Two weeks from now, from today.
Dr. Mary, is the board meeting room open on the 23rd?
After five o'clock it is.
Okay, yeah, it was, so five-thirty on the 23rd.
Yep.
Maybe all the special board meeting. Okay, and then, Dr. Mary did allude to the, we need to decide what we're going to do with the long-range planning committee that was discussed last month, that we need to move forward with it. So I guess we need to give her direction with what, how we want to move forward with that. I know we had one and I thought that committee was like a, a 10-year thing.
Yeah, two-year, the committee was for two years and they came up with a 10-year plan.
Okay, and when does that plan expire?
Well, it was two years, it was when we had the failed bond and it was for a 10-year plan. We'd have to update the numbers. CFO Wallace did a lot of some projections and some cohorts, we'd have to get an update. We have the updated building condition evaluation that was just done by Architects West, which would be able to be a firm starting spot. We have the two reports that Trustee Jones shared, and then we have the reports from the state that I shared with you and the, so we have a lot of new information. And then CFO Wallace could do the projections for enrollment based on our new projections, which are quite higher than he had done with his cohort analysis. So we do have information we would gather. I guess the information, the decision for the board, do you want to go back out to the long-range facility planning that was in, give them first option of coming back? Do you want to go out and just make a whole, out to the community, send out postcards, get patrons, people from each area, from each school? Do you want to set two people from each school come so in case one's gone? Do you want just geographical areas? Do you want mix of elementary, middle, and high school parents? So just a lot of whatever you feel like you want that makeup of that be, and then give us some direction on that would be a good starting spot.
I, I think something of that undertaking requires a workshop. There's just, I think, too much just to, so yeah, that sounds fine, go do that. I mean, that's a, that's a lot of data to go over and to decide what we even want, you know? I mean, that would, that's my input.
Okay.
I, I, I think it's that important that I don't know that, you know, I know it's another meeting, but.
Are you thinking presenting some of that data before we decide on the committee?
Uh-uh. I think it'd be great, how we did it last time, I think was, had the buy-in of all of those community people because they were part of that. We had, and I shared this and I'm sure people didn't have time to look through, it's a long piece, but, you know, 138 pages or something, but, so I'm sure you all haven't memorized it, but we had it out to where we had tours of the building, we had projections, we had financial, we looked at the condition of the facilities, looked at the finances of the building to buildings, and it was set out very intentional that, that we had set it up, a lot of CFO Wallace's guidance on it. And it was very, it built upon itself, so it scaffolded up and people at the end, the group felt like they really understood the big picture and that they were part of it. So for us to get it and then get the people to get it and just present it, I think they need to be part of that process.
Yeah, that's, that is fine. I was just trying to understand what you're referencing. The momentum built right to the end.
Yeah. They were very passionate.
It was a bitter end.
They were very passionate, that's for sure.
So you're thinking we build the committee before anything?
I mean, certainly you can look through the last tenure plan and look through the reports that Trustee Jones gave you, then the new reports from the state that I gave you and have that information if the board wants to look through all that and say, hey, now, based on all of this that we've, you've provided, we would like you to send some more direction for us. That I think is what you're talking about.
Your reference plans from Trustee Jones, are you?
That's, that's way history.
Oh, okay, so it's nothing.
No, you just sent those new, new reports that you sent to the board.
Oh.
The two reports that you just sent to the board, the re, in the email?
Oh, the reading, the, the building material?
Yes.
Yeah, is what she's referring to, where it was a 20, I think, 19 and a 20.
And then the state, you probably heard about the brand-new report the state did. I'm in halfway, I've read, read half of it so far, and that was, just came out from the State Department and it was a huge study.
Yeah, no, from that report, where I learned that the percentage of, that we're supposed to be setting aside for building maintenance, so.
And there was some good information.
There was great information.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that being said, on the long-range planning committee, do we want the data first and then build the committee, or do we want to get the word out there to patrons? We want to create another long-range planning committee and then filter through the information after the fact with the committee, I guess?
Yeah, I think we definitely can go to the community and say, we're going to, you know, we're looking for people to make the commitment.
I think putting it out there and just getting people kind of thinking about it, and then, you know, that gives us some time to look over the, the information that we do have it right now and then start working.
Okay.
So I.
But after we have the, the meeting to discuss it, do we want to make it right? Not, not, I'm not reaching out yet, right, until after we have the, or did I misinterpret that?
I don't think there's any problem in reaching out now and letting the community know that we're doing it.
Yeah, I think just put a tick, putting a tickler out there that, you know, just kind of get people thinking that they might be interested in it and then doing a, a formal call for that once we've had a chance to leave.
That's my input, then?
I think it's a good idea. Put it out to, you know, like you said, ticklers and see, who would be interested in it.
Okay. And then, Dr. Mary, did you send the communication to the State Board of Education over the issue of the bus bin?
Yeah, I put it in the board update.
That wasn't, was it? I guess not. Yep. Okay.
The letter to.
I was curious whether or not you had a response.
Yeah, it's on, so it's on my follow-up. If they didn't get back to me this week, I was going to reach back out to them, but I guess they have a new director for the state that's never been in public education or with busing, so.
Oh, that would.
Okay.
Fine. I don't think there's any harm in asking because the questions you ask about follow-up were said in public and the public doesn't get a board update, so they would never know that the letter was sent, so.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, Janelle, have you been able to secure another date for public records training?
I have not been able to get ahold of any crossfire. I have sent emails to him and he's not responded yet.
Interesting. Okay, do you want to recharge that?
Sure.
Thank you. And then, did we ever get any follow-up? I, I don't think this was in the board update, and I did get an email on the letter that you sent to our legal counsel about the building donations. I know you said you sent it to her. Did we ever get a response from her with recommendations or that the letter's okay or that we're not passing?
That is actually in the board update that's going out this week.
Oh, okay.
We've got a response and, yeah, we have a new letter that Trustee Wallace has updated our letter based on her feedback.
Okay, great.
New template.
Yeah, good to see that. Okay. So we'll wait for the update. So those were the only things that I saw going through the past minutes that I'm like, oh, yeah, we need to talk about that. Moving on to the LHS and the TLS.
TLS.
TLS, bleachers. Threw me off, I'm letting you in.
Yeah.
Okay, the bleachers of the high schools, let's just go there. That was put out for discussion at the, from the February meeting because Trustee Quimby wanted to talk about those. And then Trustee Bain shared with the board members Timberlake situation with their bleachers, which is not a pretty sight. So with respect to having discussion on this, the floors of, let's chat away.
Alls I know is the ones in the old gym at the high school are death trap. Can't even pull them out. Some sections you can't even use them at all, they're so bad. Matt, Matt Neff showed them to me when I was there. And we're talking about, there's that top section that never gets used.
Okay.
And maybe dismantling that and put it in the old gym.
Okay.
You know, and, and save tons of money.
Right.
And then I heard the bleachers at Timberlake are scary.
Scary, yeah. You walk down the, because there aren't aisles.
Right.
So you walk down the, the seats of the bleachers and they walk, they walk with you.
Right.
They lean forward, they lean backwards, they, yeah.
Well, they're helping you, they're helping you get down.
Well, unfortunately, somebody's going to get held down real fast and it's going to be.
I hear you.
A liability. Well, that's my concern with it.
I didn't like looking at the hardware falling off the wall.
No, that, that's not a good thing. Not good.
Okay, so with that respect, what do we want to do to help?
I did see, I don't know, I just saw this afternoon, a couple of quotes that had been generated for replacing the bleachers up at Timberlake.
Right, that was, yeah, that was part of the, the folder I shared with you guys that had the pictures and the videos and stuff, but it also had quotes, but, I mean, they're, they're a little bit older just because they are from 2020, but I mean, before COVID hit, so it was, so it would be upwards of $125,000 to, to replace them.
A lot of bucks.
Yeah.
Brian, you know, I mean, I'm always asking you these questions off the top of your head. I don't remember who the manufacturer of those bleachers is up there or if they're even still in business, but my, my question goes to whether or not, if they're still in business, we could have them coming in and reconditioning them on site.
The Timberlake?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I guess you could contact them and do that. I think the, you know, the bleachers as far as the underneath, you know, maintenance has gone through and, and done wells and stuff like that and shortened up in that way. I mean, you'd have to ask the company, I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, well, just a thought.
Right, and I'm not sure what the economics of it would be.
Yeah.
I mean, if we were going to look at like the Timberlake gym, we'd have to go get, you know, we'd have, that's going to be big enough, we'll probably have to go at a bid.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, the bidding requirements have increased, but that's right on the edge. So we'd probably have to go.
Or talk to them somewhere over there.
Correct. I think on, if they consider the, capital projects now, you can get three semi-formal quotes at under $200,000. But, you know, at that point, there's only going to be X amount of companies that, that bid, so.
I got an idea. Is it, is it the wood that's bad or is the structure bad?
It's the, the tread, everything. The seats are plastic, so they, and they are breaking and there's no way to refix it.
But they're breaking from the metal, right?
Yeah, the brackets and everything are, are breaking off and the hardware underneath is breaking down to where they can't reattach it. It's, they, they've been fixed so many times that they just.
Right, so why don't we contact K-Tech and have them go out there with their welders and their students and have a project and see what they could do? I mean, and they have a wood shop to replace the wood.
There's no wood in it.
There's no wood on the floors, it's all, it's all plastic.
It's all plastic and metal.
That's why they're moving it.
Well, the interesting thing is, is I was just thinking, why can't we have K-Tech do the demo? We would save 10,000 minimum if they were able.
They want real-life experience.
It does or doesn't.
I think it's a granted thing.
They could do the demo and they would save money over that.
As long as they don't trash the floor that was just done. I mean, I mean, that gym floor was just redone, so.
I'm not sure they're going to be able to pull them out of class the whole time, but I, I'm saying as, as that were, yeah. All I, I, I just recommend if we get into that and you want it done professionally, we need to go that route, is my recommendation. You know, go with the company and do that and.
To pay for the money to have them removed, is what you're saying?
That would be part of the project.
Okay.
You know, and I, I think part of the prob, with those bleachers, obviously if you buy bleachers today, they're going to, you know, they, they're going to be like Twin Lakes or the high school where they do have the, the rows with the rail, right?
The hand, the rotating.
And the stuff, you know, that's just sort of a standard anymore.
Yeah.
So more, you know, user-friendly for, for crowds, so, but.
Where do we find the, the money to do it, too?
Well, Steve Bain, that's why you're on the budget camp. We just had a lot of requests, bleachers and curriculum and. So with Trustee Quimby's suggestion, is that possible to move the bleachers, I think, and liability-wise, if they moved the bleachers, switched the upstairs bleachers to downstairs and then?
Yeah, I think they had a quote a couple of years ago, it was like $6,000.
Oh, to have somebody come do it?
You have the company that built them come do it instead of putting, what was it, 60 or 8, $68,000 back then, I think, to have a new section put in the old gym. But that upstairs barely ever gets used.
Are they the same length?
No, they're taller, but you could take off the section, like, you know, you could take out four rows and make it as high as the, the old gym is now. I think there are four or five rows, you know, and go across. I think there's enough there to do it. And there's a mother already there on those bleachers to move them all out.
Well.
I don't know. I mean, you'd have to go attack the company and say, get a bid.
I, I don't know if Principal Derrick got the quote. I mean, I didn't. I, I don't know if Principal Derek got the quote. I mean, well, I didn't. So I'm not sure where that number came from, but it might have been at the, you know, the, that they were looking at it at the, at the building level.
We're talking about putting the wrestling room up there. That's why we're talking about it.
So that would be something that Mr. Derek would do? He would be responsible for getting a quote for moving the bleachers?
Or Matt?
Well, I mean, we could start researching and I'm not sure who has done that and who they talked to. I just don't know.
No, because, because it's district funds that are going to pay for it one way or the other, I think it needs to go through Brian's office. Obviously, he can work with whoever's been out researching it, but the ultimate responsibility is always there.
Right, right, yeah. I just forgot who is that. So I mean, if that's where the direction we need to go, then we need to go that direction and at least find out what the cost would be, I would think.
Right. Well, I, I would suggest maybe that, that you and Mike go over and take a look at it and talk to Derek and see what the possibility would be.
Yeah, it might be, sure.
I think Tim was the, was the director of, was it Tim Conley?
Well, that's her, that's her address, too, is Tim Conley.
Right, because he's the SUV director up there now. He's retiring this year, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I know. I'm just saying the bids came in his name. They didn't go in Brian's name. So it was looked at at the building level, not from the district office, but I would think.
Well, I think it's.
Which is fine, you know, initial research.
Right, exactly. That's what I'm saying. I think maybe if Matt Neff wanted to do some initial research and then bring it on up the chain, that's, I think that's absolutely appropriate. So that we're not sending CFO Wallace out to get a bid on something that Matt can really take the time to, to figure out and then bring it up. Bring it up.
So what would you like to do about Timberlake?
Well, we can have, I mean, with Mr. Conley retiring this year, see if he has time to, to get a couple of more current bids or quotes. They've got the pictures and the video to kind of show what's wrong with them, but, yeah.
Probably more work to do.
More current quotes.
Not any.
I mean, these aren't super old, but just because of how much everything has changed since they were done. We want more.
That's a piece of work that's going to have to be done by the summer.
Oh, yeah.
Bleachers. How long is that? You get them out in three years.
Oh, I think, yeah, it would have been scheduled.
Get, get stopped because COVID, people.
So we're thinking we need both schools then to do the, the footwork to bring bids back to the, uh, board or Mr. Wallace or somebody so we can see them?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I think that that's.
So who's going to be that?
Dr. Meyer, would you please direct the activities directors at both the Upland High Schools to, for Timberlake, we would need bleacher replacement and we would need new quotes. We do have old ones from twenty twenty. Um, and then for Lakeland, if Mr. Neff could look into the, what's it called, David?
The potential to move the upstairs bleachers to the old gym, yeah.
Bringing the, the newer ones down. All right.
Do we ever operate, you know, large-scale tournaments or anything where it was upstairs bleachers getting used?
Oh.
Uh, I think the only one we really, the wrestling one, but all the districts decided they wanted to split this year.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, we all, we all split.
Oh, that's a first.
Yeah. Yeah, it kind of sucks. But, I mean, even with, even with, uh, there wasn't that many people up there. It wasn't packed or anything. That's the only one I know of.
Yeah, but, but that was two A and it was not upstairs.
Right.
Moving on to a board member, but the future, or future agenda items? Is there a game?
Well, I think we covered training and all that kind of stuff. The only other thing I think pressing that we need to do is figure out with the treasurer, take the information that Brooke sent us from ISBA, what the original job description was. And then, I'm not sure if there was ever anything updated on the website. Remember all those job descriptions that we removed because they were not correct? I don't know if there was one in there or not. I downloaded them at one time, but.
Are you talking about the treasurer?
Yes.
No, there hasn't been a treasurer. That's why I sent you guys both those, the one that she had when she signed and then ISBAs. Because there, there hasn't been a need for a new job description in, you know, almost thirty years.
And regarding that, just so the board knows, that most districts don't have really a treasurer job description. They might have a business manager, they might have an accounting specialist, they might have a financial specialist, a accounting systems tech, you know, different titles than that job title than that person is or CFO or financial director. Then that person's a, is, you know, each year's appointed treasurer, but the treasurer itself having that job title is sort of unique, really, just so you know. I mean, most districts, so if, if you went to Post Falls right now, they have their finance director and I think they have an accounting specialist. And the finance director is the treasurer, but they don't have a treasurer job description. Does that make sense?
No, because if we're appointing, I, I mean, what your, your words you used, I understood them. But if we're appointing a treasurer, then there should be specific job responsibilities that that treasurer needs to do. And if the treasurer doesn't understand what's expected, because the board is obligated by statute under certain things, then we are not doing the treasurer a good service. The treasurer should have a job description of the expectations because that person is being appointed by the board. So I do think there needs to be a job description. And I think, I know when Brooke sent us the documents, you know, Ms. Happney was hired as a bookkeeper. She wasn't hired as the district treasurer. She was later appointed as the treasurer. So, and knowing what her job duties are as to what ISBA's suggestions for the treasurer are, we need to make those in alignment so that we're, she's not out of whack with what she's supposed to be doing by what you've directed her to do. And she's not out of line with what we're expecting her to do as the treasurer. So we do need to have some conversation on that so that we can create a job description for the treasurer.
You know, it's at the, you know, the board's pleasure and how you want to move forward. I was just sort of telling you, really, trying to give you some background on current practice of most districts in the state. That's all.
Thank you.
Anyways, so I think we just need to address whatever that looks like. I don't know if we're going to do that, but.
I mean, we have qualms with the fact that we keep appointing a person that we never hear from. And that we've learned that her job description is very specific to what she does. And we've appointed her to a position that it's just a title and I don't think that's appropriate. So we need to kind of put it in alignment. Because if we have expectations of the treasurer, then the treasurer needs to be aware of that and so does CFO Wallace.
So anyways, that was my future agenda item, but I don't know how we address that. I don't know if we do that as a group, but I don't know if somebody takes on the task of melding something together and then bring it to the board. I don't know if that's a policy issue. Well, I do think the policy, there needs to be something addressed in policy.
Who normally writes job descriptions?
Well, it's statutes. It's up to us to make sure they're correct and approve them.
Yeah, but physically, you know, practically speaking, who, who would normally write a job description?
We get the model policy from, the model one from ISBA. Then Brooke will check around to other districts to see if they have one. Then our district leadership team will, or whoever's the appropriate supervisor would make recommendations, submit it to the board for approval.
Yeah. And that's, that's a good process.
Yeah, and then typically, yeah, then we usually have whoever's sitting in the position go through and say, hey, does this look like what you're doing? That's what we've done more recently with that also. So is that the practice we should follow then to have whomever come up with the duties description or what have you and?
Sure, draft form and.
We'll take it from there.
Well, our policy twelve thirty does give specific instruction for expectations of the treasurer. And then there is also the caveat in there that the treasurer shall have additional duties as shall be prescribed by the superintendent and the board and shall perform these duties and responsibilities outlined in their job description.
Right.
So either our own policy references, but there's a job description that we don't have, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with the policy the way it is. We just need to add that one component.
Yeah, right, and we probably need to update the policy.
So I guess that then what I'm hearing is with the feedback we got with the two items that we received from Brooke was that we, I guess, since Mr. Wallace knows most of what she actually does, if he could meld something together, being that you said that the one we got from ISBA was not even close to anything she does. Since you have more knowledge, I mean.
No, I, I wasn't saying that. I, I think the ISBA policy, they're trying to write a policy for, you know, a hundred and twelve districts. And so it's not, they, they often have way more language in what they provide us than usually what is needed for good policy or good job descriptions. Because they're trying to cover their bases for all these different contingencies out there of all these Myra districts. That's just a general statement on how ISB writes their policies and how they do some of their job descriptions. But I was saying that a lot of districts, when they have the treasurer as appointed, and as we've discussed, that can be a wide range, where it's the CFO sometimes appointed treasurer, or sometimes for a small district, they're the board clerk, they're the, um, they're the treasurer and they're the IT director. You know, so they have many hats. And so I was saying this, sometimes school districts don't have a specific job description for a treasurer. It might be that the treasurer duties are involved in that hybrid position that is that three-headed position. I guess that's what I was trying to say.
I'll clarify my statement. I wasn't referring to the statement you made a few minutes ago. I was referring to when, uh, uh, Brooke had you look over what ISBA had sent and you, the comment we received was that, you know, you had looked at it and was like, no, this isn't close to what she does or she doesn't do these things or whatever it was. So I guess what I'm asking is can you look at what she signed, look at what ISBA has, your own knowledge, whatever, and bring us?
Yeah, and we could, yeah, certainly we can update that.
Okay.
Take a look at, you know, the original, you know, when she was hired and then really sort of how it's evolved and what, how it works today. And, and look at some of the ISBA stuff, because a lot of that mature is good.
Right.
Right, but it's just a lot of it is maybe not applicable.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. We've found that many times.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any further, uh, future agendas? Uh, I don't have any. Then I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session. I'll make a motion to enter into executive session per Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six one B.
Sure.
Very emotional, second. We need a roll call vote.
Trustee Quimby?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Bain?
Yes.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chris?
Yes.
Me too, I'm done. Yeah.
I think we need to start taking like a break at three. Okay, we've come out of the executive session and there's no actionable items getting adjourned. I don't know what the time is.
Uh, nine thirty-five.
Time is nine thirty-five.